You guys ready to roll? Okay, one minute warning. I know, I thought it was two, it's tomorrow night. Okay, we're live. Good evening, folks, we're gonna call the public hearing to order, thank you, it's 5:30. Just wanna do a mic check, can you hear me outside? No? We're gonna get that fixed right now. Can you hear me now? No. One more time, turning it up, we're working on that. There's a bunch of people out there doing this, so... Mic test outside council chambers. Thumbs up all the way to the back, thank you. Alright, while we got that little bit of housekeeping done, I'm just going to read a bit of some prepared notes, and most of these are procedural in nature, but I'll start with saying good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking time out of your evening for joining us tonight in the process in which we're going to hear from you tonight. And I just wanna begin by welcoming you and thanking you for being here. It's my responsibility tonight to ensure this process is respectful, fair, and inclusive, regardless of where anyone stands on the issue before us tonight. Tonight's an opportunity for you, residents, user groups, and stakeholders of Cochrane, to speak directly to council about the proposed transition of operations at the Spray Lake Sawmill Center in Cochrane Arena. It's important to emphasize, no decision has been made. This hearing is a key step in the process, not the conclusion of it. Everyone in this room cares deeply about the future of recreation in Cochrane, every single one of us. And while there may be different perspectives, we are all working toward the same goal: ensuring we continue to have access to excellent, affordable, and inclusive recreation opportunities in our community. Strong opinions are welcome, disagreement is expected, but let's commit to doing this respectfully and to hearing one another out. That's how we'll move forward together in this. I'd like to walk you through how we're going to unfold the evening, and before I do, I just need to confirm with administration that notice of this public hearing was published in accordance with Section 606 of the MGA. Thumbs up, thank you, Mr. Derikott. Okay, so here's how this evening's going to unfold. We're gonna start with a presentation from town administration up at the podium. That's going to provide us background and context on the RFP process. After that, council will have an opportunity to ask questions of administration, and then we'll move to the speakers list. When your name is called, and I've got one here already, there's probably another couple outside, when your name is called, please come forward to the microphone here at the front, face the podium and state your name and any group or association that you may be representing tonight. Each speaker will be given five minutes to make their comments, which is our process. New tonight, as a note, we do have a speaker's countdown clock on the screen for everyone to see, and that is, well, before I get to that, each speaker will be given five minutes. Unless you're representing a group, you then have 10 minutes. I'll be holding everyone to the time limit, just out of fairness to ensure everybody that's here tonight will have their opportunity to share your thoughts with us. Council may have questions for you, so don't run away from the podium after you're giving your remarks. Council may have questions. Once we've gone through all of the speakers list, I'll ask if there's anyone else in attendance who wishes to speak, and that includes the people in the other room, I understand we have an overflow room at ABC back here. I think they're on a 60-second delay feed from what, so they're hearing this a minute from now. But then, once we get to all through the list, that includes people in the other room when you, once you hear this. And I ask everyone be courteous and respectful, please, of one another. Only one speaker should be speaking at a time. And please ensure you're standing directly in front of the microphone, so your comments can be clearly heard both in this room, the other room, and to our livestream. Finally, at the end, administration will return to address questions or concerns that have been raised throughout the public hearing. This RFP process now has raised some valid questions, so before moving on, I want to clarify just how we got here. In response to longstanding discussions around how to invest, or how to best deliver recreation in Cochrane and Rocky View County, we issued a joint request for proposals. The intent was not to privatize or abandon what we've built together, but to explore whether a partner could come and help operate the current facility, and current programs, and current users, and all that exists in the facility today. And again, it's important to underscore, no operator has been selected, as of yet. The evolution is ongoing, or the evaluation is ongoing, and this hearing is a vital part of the process. Council's here to listen tonight, I just want to be clear that this is a public hearing, not a decision-making meeting, so no decision will be rendered this evening. Council does not get into back and forth in public hearings, we are just here to listen. Again, we're all here because we care. Tonight, we will gather your input, and will clarify what is and is not proposed. If council ultimately votes to accept the proposal in front of us, it's important that we all understand exactly what that means for our community. And with that, I will ask Mr. Derikott to come to the podium to present the administrative presentation part of the hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and council, it's a privilege again to be here, speaking on behalf of administration to yourselves, but obviously to a large portion of our community that, as you said, obviously care very deeply about the services that are provided through Spray Lake Center and Cochrane Arena, and the recreation environment in our community. In the interest of the evening being, as you said, mostly focused on hearing from the public, I'd like to spend a few minutes just reframing some of the information that's been shared, including some emerging information from some of the stakeholder conversations we've been able to have since I last spoke with council. But I'd like to move through that relatively quickly to focus on getting to the folks who are here to share their views on that tonight. So I'd like to start by just reiterating again that I believe that we are talking about a success story in our community. The Spray Lake Center, as we all know, was generated of the community, by the community, for the community, and has become a real world-class recreational facility that we all enjoy. The success of the users and, by extension, the community is critical in our ongoing service delivery. But I think one shared factor that we all acknowledge is that Spray Lakes is nearing or at capacity in many of its service delivery capacities. This is a credit to the staff, the board, and all who have contributed to this from the community over the many years of its development. As mentioned before, that the premise of this question was much less focused on the very current state of recreational services, which we evaluate to be quite strong in our community, but how do we meet the growing demands and pressures from our community as it grows? As we know through the recent growth study here, 20 years from now, we expect, given current trends, the population of Cochrane to be somewhere between 70,000 and 80,000 people, who are all gonna want to enjoy similar services and similar recreational opportunities. And what became very apparent is that we needed to begin now to plan for how we were gonna provide expanded recreational opportunities to our community. And that was the most pressing part of the question when we began this process over a year ago, is are we best organized and best designed in a recreational delivery model to meet those demands that we know are coming, and ensure that all people of Cochrane have a chance to enjoy high-level recreational opportunities? We've gone through quite a process to get to this stage here, beginning with, as you said, last year, the issuance of the RFP, extensive evaluation process, identification of a preferred vendor being the YMCA Calgary, and then now, in the most recent time, beginning with some individual user group meetings, now a public hearing, we are nearing the decision point on whether or not there's an opportunity to consider an alternative model in our community. I also want to identify that this is not the end of the process, even the decision point. There is a really, really important piece that I believe, as I've met with stakeholders and heard from their concerns, can freely admit has been under-articulated, and that is, if a new operator was to be selected, that there's a six-month transition period under which those users would be critical in ensuring that a new operator understood the premise under which they were going to be operating that facility. We invited proposals from operators to manage, support, maintain our existing recreational facility and programs, not to change, adjust, or bring in newer alternative models. And that transition period, led by and in conjunction with the existing board, I think is going to be a critical moment where users would potentially be introduced to a new operator and begin to build on those important relationships that we know exist today between the operator and the user groups. So I wanted to, again, just refresh a couple of core pieces to the evaluation here, and I think this one is especially important. We started from a premise, I just wanna keep repeating that because I think it's so critically important, that core programming of this facility would remain intact. And when I say core programming, I mean, existing leaseholders and user groups would continue to enjoy the same level of access and programming that they do now. That was the premise under which this conversation was undertaken. And so, we didn't go to the user groups to say, hey, what kind of programming changes would you like to see, or what would happen in those areas? Because we believe that the programming is well-used, well-designed, and that there needs to be limited if any change is there at all. So it is anticipated that the new operator, should council choose to go in that direction, would only be enhancing, facilitating, and delivering on the core programming that exists as of today. One key element that I think there's been plenty of dialogue on that I just wanted to highlight, centered around the On the Rocks Lounge there. When I last spoke to council as well, there have since been some conversations, both with the YMCA and the Cochrane Curling Club, around that important function, not just for curling, but for the facility as a whole, as a social gathering space, and an important place for tournaments and events to take place. The YMCA Calgary has committed that that facility would remain open and operational as it does today. So there would be, again, limited changes, if any, to what we'd see on the Rocks Lounge. Refreshing now, a couple of the really important factors on the financial side of things. The short-term financial implication, and I think it would almost be fair to separate this into the current facility's financial impact versus the potential for future facilities, which I'll talk, speak to in a moment. It's anticipated that there would be a pretty significant improvement in the financial performance of the facility. And again, in association with some decisions that need to be made annually by council through the budget process, so again, I just want to reiterate that council will continue to have influence on the outcomes here as part of that, that there could be as much as $6 million savings over the first five years. That $6 million would allow us to invest in other recreational opportunities that we know are so important in our community. I think you clicked off the PowerPoint when you moved the timer there, thank you. The long-term financial impact. When I spoke to council previously, I spent a moment really emphasizing this point because, again, from the administrative perspective, we've been tasked with supporting council and the community in meeting its long-term needs, and planning, and preparing for the future demands of our community. And as we know, recreation is critically important, but it's also quite costly to develop, to operate, and to provide to the community. And so, one of the top outcomes, that top positive outcomes of this potential opportunity is this long-term financial outlook, where the development of a future rec center could see the YMCA operate that at zero cost to the taxpayer. Again, depending on the nature of that facility, that could be anywhere between $20 to $40 million of savings over a 30-year lifespan of a recreation center. And if you want to boil that down to the impact it would have on the broader community, that's between a 5% to 10% tax increase that could be saved by considering this opportunity. I want to note again, the membership value that we believe will be, the implications of the membership value, should there be, again, a change. Well, we note that there is anticipated to be some change to membership costs, although the memberships are managed a little bit differently by the current operator to the YMCA, so the comparisons are not perfect. I do also want to note that there is added value for access to not only all of YMCA Calgary's facilities, but generally speaking, any YMCA you might visit typically honors any YMCA membership, so there is some produced additional value there. The resiliency at the operational level, I think, is critical. We have been well-served, I think, by the board and staff over time, but the YMCA Calgary, I just think, brings a next level of organizational capacity and scalability that we don't currently enjoy in our current circumstance. Over a 100-year track record of managing significant recreation facilities, currently around a billion dollars' worth of recreational assets in the city of Calgary that they manage, and obviously, as a successful and large team of staff and volunteers that can be brought to bear to support our community and its recreational environment as well. There's clear guidelines on reporting back to the community, and I think that this is one of the key elements that I've heard, again, in some of the conversations that we've had with key stakeholders, and I'm sure broadly speaking, the community, is how do we ensure that the Spray Lake Center and the Cochrane Arena stay focused on serving our community? To that, I would reiterate the point I made initially, is we, as a community, will be dictating or mandating to the YMCA what the programming environment of our recreational facility should be, and that's ultimately the users of the facility, the demand, and the preferences that emerge from those groups, and the feedback mechanism that will be critically important to assure that we're meeting those needs, both with robust reporting at the administrative level on operational issues, and then annual reporting at the governance level for council and to the community to ensure good stewardship was to be in place. So the overall value proposition is, we believe the programming offerings to be remaining as they are today, a significant enhancement to the short- and long-term financial implications, a relative value of neutrality there with small increases, but coming along with that additional value of access to more broader recreational services in the region, a strong increase to the operational resiliency of the facility and of our community, and then some increases to the reporting structure that we would expect to see. Overall, again, administration sees this as a strong value proposition for our community. In summary, I think it would be best to talk about what is not changing versus what is changing, as I believe, again, through the conversations I've been privileged to take a part of with the user groups, understandably, the biggest question has been, how, what will be different for us tomorrow versus what we experience today? So in the current state, the town of Cochrane and Rocky View County own the facility, that will remain the case in the future state. The staff that currently operate our facility will remain. The same folks that clean, program, support, the folks that teach our kids swimming lessons or manage the ice will remain as the folks that we still get to see and appreciate for all the work they do for our community. Current users and lease agreements are going to be honored through this process to ensure continuity of those programs and those opportunities that have been agreed to, including naming agreements, advertising pieces, all of those functional agreements that are currently in place will be maintained as part of this process. Membership accessibility, the parameters under which someone who's a member of the facility and how they access it will not change. And again, I just want to continue to reiterate that programming will remain the same. We heard questions about things like access for tournaments for hockey that have been in place for many, many years, and the commitment from the ownership and through the YMCA is that those programs will continue to be enjoyed without disruption. And then finally, just again noting that the functionality and access of the On the Rocks Lounge will be maintained. So what is changing? If all of that is staying the same, what is the purpose of this? And what are we hoping to gain? We have the opportunity to reduce operational costs, to free up resources for additional recreational services. And most importantly, I believe that this is the best path forward to our community to meet our recreational needs with the smallest burden on the taxpayers. We have been in this chambers recently, as Monday night, talking about the significant impact of costs of recreation around Horse Creek Sports Park. We know about the needs of ice users. We've heard recently from our soccer groups and other user groups about the growing demand and the lack of recreational opportunities. And so, at its fundamental level, I believe that this opportunity provides the best overall environment for Town of Cochrane to meet all of these recreational needs without having an outsized impact on the taxpayers of our community. I'd be happy to answer any questions there may be.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Derikott. We'll open it up, council to questions about the presentation from administration. Counsel Reed, you're first out of the gate.
Yep. First of all, will that presentation be available to the general public on the town website?
Certainly happy to make it available.
I think that would be really critical for those that weren't able to see it in the gallery and might well be interested. I had a couple of questions if I could, so... Did you reference that what the town is currently subsidizing the operating budget to? To what extent? Was that part of your presentation, or did I miss that?
I didn't mention the specifics of it this evening through the chair to Counsel Reed. We currently, the ownership group subsidizes the Spray Lakes Board to just over $3 million a year. The majority of that is capital funding, which is expected to continue between one and a half and $1.8 million operation, or sorry, capital funding. About $1.2 million of that is operational, and that's, I think, where we could expect to see those savings, is in the operational area.
So the preface of part of this would be then that we would be able to use $1.2 million for other recreational facilities or needs in the community then?
That's correct.
And then, if there-
Counsel Reed, if I could just, could you move your microphone a little closer? I don't know if you can be heard outside, so great.
Sorry about that. This, kind of segue into that. So if the YMCA were able to produce a profit, would that community remain in the community, or that income remain in the community?
Yeah, thank you through the chair, that's a really great question. So they must do financial reporting every year, including the outcomes of the facility. The way the agreement is stated, that all revenue generated from the community must, from the facility must first meet all of the facility needs, including future capital costs. And so, it would need to first go to things like reducing the capital subsidy that the owners gave to YMCA to operate. It's not anticipated that they'll be able to reach a full cost recovery in the existing facility. If they did, that would be a wonderful outcome, but first, they would have to reduce that entire $3, $3.2 million burden to the community.
Okay, so any profit would go back into the facility, either in terms of the capital request and offset that? Would any members of our community be displaced, ice or swimming lesson or anything, by other YMCA members from other communities?
No, thank you, another great question. No, this is not anticipated to happen, and there will be administrative, when I say administrative, programming, administration protections for Cochrane residents. I use the example of swimming lessons because I think it's the easiest and probably one that many of us have experienced is, even as a member of our community, getting into swimming lessons can be challenging because there's often more kids than there are spaces. Programs like that would have a community-first entry point, where local residents would have access to those before they were ever opened up to general use, for example, other YMCA members from Calgary to come out and use them. So I do not anticipate that to be a large concern because the demand on the local programs is already oversubscribed in many cases, and so I'm confident that that will remain the case.
Okay, one more question if I could. If council were to proceed with this YMCA opportunity, and at some future point decide that it no longer wanted to continue that, how long, is there a six-month or grace period? And more importantly, is there a financial penalty for getting out of that arrangement?
There is no direct financial penalty. Council could choose, I should say, the owners could choose to exit the arrangement, much like the one we have today with the six-month notice period.
Right.
I think in any case of a transition like that, depending on what you're transitioning to, there may be the soft costs of making that transition, but there's no direct penalty or buyout or payout to exit the arrangement.
Okay, and just to reiterate again, and because most of the emails that, at least I received, were about the lounge, so the lounge would continue as-is?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Reed. Counsel Nagel?
Yeah, thank you. Nice to see a huge crowd for this. I think in my 11 and a half years on council, this is probably the largest crowd I've ever seen, so it's pretty clear to see how important this asset is to the community. As this is a public hearing, our mayor has already suggested we cannot engage in debate or take positions, so I shall just be asking questions. And I have 11 questions. My first question, did I hear you say to Counsel Reed that the YMCA does not project that they can generate a surplus at this facility? I thought when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, there was a $1 million projected surplus being discussed.
Yeah, thank you, happy to clarify that. If you include the capital elements of that, they're not anticipating they'll be able to close that gap. They are expecting to be able to close the $1.2 million operational subsidy. However, the capital investment from the owners is expected to remain in that $1.6 to $1.8 million a year range.
Okay, and then, when we're looking at the budget in terms of surplus and deficit, any transfers out from this facility into the general YMCA funds would not be counted as a surplus, correct? That would count as an operational expense?
For the, through the, for the YMCA's budget, is that what you mean?
What I'm trying to clarify is that it's not only important, am I correct in understanding that it's not only important to focus in on a surplus and a deficit, but also trying to understand how much, how much funds might be transferred out of our community, not as a surplus or deficit, but as a operational expense?
Yeah, thank you. So the way that the agreement is written, as I said, is that all revenues generated in and through that facility must first meet all of the obligations related to that facility, including those capital costs. So if the YMCA was to be able to successfully reduce the total ownership subsidy to zero and then still generate resources, they would be able to use those resources for other activities in their broader organization, but only if they are able to meet all the needs of the community first financially.
And is the interest of the YMCA in this facility to try and generate an operational surplus?
It is not their core objective, nor is it the core mandate that the owners are approaching this from. It is to first and foremost provide an exceptional community experience, to build community, to facilitate recreational communities. The YMCA at its heart is a community building organization and they want to extend their reach and they're building capacity to our community. So while they use the operation of recreational facilities to generate resources to undertake those activities, their primary function is not to generate commercial benefits.
Okay, so I said I had eleven questions, but none of those were even on my list. Those were generated from Counsel Reed's questions in your response. So going to my list. Looking at the, at the rec center as an asset, is it fair to estimate that the replacement cost of this current rec center would be about 150 million dollars?
Through the chair to Counsel Nagel, it's probably closer to 250 million dollars. Erdry has recently released some projections based on some analysis of a similar full service recreation facility that is between 250 and 300 million dollars. To be clear, that's the replacement value, not necessarily what we would consider the asset value.
Okay, so if we're talking about a 250 million dollar asset, am I also correct in my understanding that with the exception of its ongoing liabilities in the form of life cycling, this asset is entirely paid off?
That, that is, I believe that we paid off the last of the debt just recently, as in 2024. I'll, I'll confirm that, but that, that is my understanding, yes.
Okay, and then my next question is, what is the YMCA giving the Town of Cochrane in return for this 250 million dollar asset?
Well, ownership is not being exchanged. The town and county are retaining ownership, so there is no exchange of, there is no purchase happening.
Correct, so I'll rephrase my question. What are they giving the Town of Cochrane in exchange for operational control of this asset?
Well, I think the exceptional service to our users, bringing their experience capacity to ensure the very, very best community outcomes. They are, by our evaluation and validated through experiences with the city and Calgary and others, do a very, very good job of adding value in, in, in those ways. So in essence, they would be managing on our behalf, much like we enjoy now through the Spray Lakes Board, those important services at our community at a high level and with positive outcomes.
So in return for this 250 million dollar asset, they are not giving any financial consideration back to the Town of Cochrane?
They're, they're, they are not paying us anything. No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. And then if, if the operations as performed by the YMCA result in an operational loss, who's responsible for covering that loss?
The ownership is, again, as, under the current arrangement, so there's no change of status there as part of that. I would say that council maintains annual control over those processes through the budget process. Each year, they must submit a budget plan that be approved by the town. So they don't just have free rein to do whatever they want from a financial sense and then the community is going to be on the hook. Council annually would review and approve those budgets to ensure they remain in the community interest.
Okay, so just to make sure I have it crystal clear for the public record, we believe this asset's worth about 250 million dollars. And in exchange for operational control of it, we would be giving that to YMCA for no financial consideration in return. And that it's paid in full and that if it runs at a loss, we have to cover the loss.
I, I, I might moderate that a little bit. I think generally I agree with the way you phrase that. What I would say is we are anticipating there to be conservatively a million dollars annually in improved financial performance. So while there's not a direct, the YMCA is not paying us a million dollars, we do expect there to be approximately a million dollars financial benefit annually. Again, based on the capacity, expertise and other elements of the YMCA organization that would allow them to generate that. So we don't currently enjoy that reality and we would. So I do believe there will be a financial benefit, but it does not come in the form of a direct payment for access to managing the facility.
And has the YMCA been willing to commit to this financial benefit or is it only a verbal promise?
The, the YMCA has been very, very clear that ultimately that decision lies with the community. They can go as far on cost recovery as the respective owners were to ask them to or they can, for example, lower their financial outcomes on the backend if council was to so direct. So that ultimately will be the choice of the owners.
And is that a benefit that we only enjoy with the YMCA or could we do that currently with our current operations?
We currently enjoy the same realities. I, 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 that, that to me is something that is, is not changing.
Okay, two quick questions and then I'll turn it over to everybody else. And so if the Town of Cochrane does not like this arrangement, can you please clarify for me the terms again, how we would get out of this arrangement?
There's a six month termination clause that we could exercise at any point if we were to find this to be unsatisfactory arrangement.
And then to deeper understand that, in order to get out of this arrangement, is my, is my understanding correct that we would need to get Rocky View County to agree for us to get out of it and at the same time Rocky View County is not on the hook for any operational shortfall, only the Town of Cochrane? Is that on the hook financially?
So two parts to that. One is, yes, we do have shared ownership of that facility and Rocky View County would be a participant in that decision making. It would be mutual from the owners. So we would have to continue to work with our partners at Rocky View County. Again, that is unchanged from the current arrangement. That is the reality that we exist in now. I would also add that our Rocky View County partners, we do have a cost sharing agreement where they do share by a proportion of usership of the facility in the operational subsidies and or benefits that exist through that facility. So they do pay based on users, a part of the operational deficit.
Okay, final question. If there are any current staff that lose their jobs as a result of this change, what is being done to protect those people and help them land on their feet?
Yeah, I, I, I think the commitment that has always been made in those circumstances is that any individual that found themselves in that position would be given a full and fair severance arrangement, which would include appropriate compensation. Typically, those also include things like, you know, career support and, and all of those types of things. It will be done in the most, you know, ethical and appropriate way possible.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counsel Nagel. Counsel Podeko?
Uh, thank you. I do have a couple of questions. When it comes to user groups as well as the On the Rocks Lounge, you know, initially it was stated that the YMCA would not necessarily look to support On the Rocks. Now they're stating that, yes, they will support it. Will this actually be written in as an amendment into that contract? Not just on good faith that they will continue to support it?
Yeah, thank you. So the, the way that the current agreement addresses this is that the operator inherits all, inherits all obligations that are currently in place as part of this for service. So where there is not formal arrangements or agreements, the, the informal pieces of that are expected to be maintained as part of that. And if I may, just before I, I speak about that, I do want to clarify the, the comments on, on, on the lounge because I do think that became an issue based on some of the ways that I spoke about it. What the YMCA has said and they maintain is that they will not have their staff directly serving alcohol, but they will be very happy to facilitate the operation of the lounge as they do in other spaces for events and private functions and those types of things in a way that the lounge will continue to exist and serve members as it does now. So that's where some of the, I think misunderstanding came in and I apologize, some of that was on the way that I articulated that. So I just wanted to clarify that piece. But I, I would say I do believe that the current agreement does protect existing programming. It is written clearly in the agreement that the YMCA would inherit those obligations. It doesn't explicitly list every single obligation because there's, I, I don't say this to be trite. There's quite literally, literally thousands of obligations that come along with that.
Understood. I mean, I guess the problem is, is that for, for many folks, they want to have that assurance, right? And when we hand over something and we say that there's a six month window, we know that in six months, a lot can change, right? And all of a sudden, what sounds good right now doesn't necessarily pay it, play out when it comes to six months down the road. But I'll leave it at that for that one. Another question is, so when we talk about a 6.2 million dollar savings over the five years, when it's stated that membership is not really changing, it's kind of neutral, program is stare, you know, staying the same, it's kind of neutral. How are we getting to a number of 6.2 million dollars in a surplus? Because the only way that I can see this happening is either you are cutting way down on staff, you're raising fees or you're coming at it from some other angle. So I think that the numbers to me, it sounds really good to say 6.2 million, but how did that breakdown come to be and what are the details behind it? Because I think the numbers need to come out and they need to be, they need to be shown to the community as well.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Podeko for the question. So there, if we are, as a community, to engage the YMCA as a partner, they bring their entire operational model and system to the equation. And there's a couple of key ways in which those have financial benefits. Some of those are in direct operational efficiencies because of the size, scale and scope of their organization. They can afford to do some things that will be less expensive in a larger model around the operation of, of the facility as part of that. The other things that they do incredibly well are fund development that as a nonprofit, they are incredibly successful in generating resources through fundraising and donors as part of that. And the other thing is, is that they have developed a really strong track record of other orders of government supporting them in their work. So grants from the province and or federal government all become a part of that equation that we don't currently have. So through a combination of those efforts, we will see, hope to see that improved financial performance. I, I do want to say when we speak about user fees and membership fees, what I would say is, again, we expect the membership rate and the user rate environment to remain much as it is now, which doesn't mean that fees will never go up or never change, but those are done in conjunction with market pressures or direct operational concerns. For example, this year I believe there was a 12% in, increase to user fees. Budgeted for a 5% next year and a 5% increase the year after that. That's just responsible management of that facility and YMCA would engage in those similar practices. So I don't want it to be heard that membership fees will never go up, but I want to be very clear that it's not a YMCA starts and the next day there's something like a 30 or 40% increase in user fees. That would not be the case.
And one last quick question. Obviously, this is a public hearing. Is council able to hear comments after this public hearing that will continue on? Or is this kind of the, as in general, most public hearings that we have, that it becomes a stop place that council cannot receive any more comments?
Yeah, I, I maybe will ask maybe Ms. Robertson to support this commentary. I, I think this is a little bit unique as a non-statutory public hearing where it's not bound by some of the rules that you might see around the subdivision and development and planning, where there's very clear legal and legislative frameworks around that. So for example, if there was an email to come in at the end of this week, what I suggest that council would still be perfectly within their rights to consider that a valuable piece of feedback. My answer to that would be yes, unless Ms. Robertson's gonna tell us otherwise.
I would hate to contradict you, sir, but I would suggest that we, we hold our same processes. We have many non-statutory public hearings that hold that same process. What, what may happen is council may be provided additional information by administration that responds to the questions and concerns that are raised here when the decision point comes back, which can often happen, similar to when second reading changes are made. That council would then consider those changes in conjunction with all of the feedback that you have received to date and that we received before the end of this evening.
So thank you. And just to sum up, if I may, Ms. Robertson, to say is that there is a pathway to continue to consider the community feedback as we go forward in this process.
Okay, thanks. Let's play up for now.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Counsel McFadden.
Uh, thank you very much. Much appreciated. First off, folks, everyone, thanks for coming out tonight. And everybody who sent emails and made phone calls and filled out the web form. It's when we engage with the community that we make the best decisions for Cochrane. So thank you for your time tonight. It's much appreciated. And so I also have a list of questions. My colleagues have waded into some of them. But so I'll just go through. They're not necessarily grouped together. So the, the first, like in a lot of the conversations I've had and certainly from my point of view, it's important that we be, find a way to continue the conversations. I think anything that the community learns tonight, they're going to want to be able to respond to and continue to engage with. So we're gonna have to find some way within our legislative mechanisms to enable that. So, but what I've certainly heard is folks aren't necessarily yea or nay. They've just got a lot of, you know, questions. They want some clarity around that. And so we're having this public hearing tonight. Obviously, those who are participating are gonna be able to see the responses to that. But what's our strategy to kind of continue to provide some clarity in response to the questions we've been getting from the community?
Thank you for the question, Counsel McFadden. One thing that I would note is we have already scheduled a user group meeting with the Spray Lakes leaseholders and user groups. I believe it's on the 19th where we hope to continue this dialogue. We have not had an opportunity, obviously, to meet with all of the user groups. There's, again, many of them. But in the same vein as what you described, it was always anticipated that there would, we would be at this stage of the process where we would need to do a lot of work to ensure clarity on the, you know, the rationale for this, but also the impacts and to ensure connectivity between whoever's operating the facility. In this case, the potential of the YMCA and the users of that facility. Where I think, I, I hope to give comfort to those that are, I think, again, understandably feeling some anxiety around a significant change of this nature is, is that in that six month transition period that I've noted, that the Spray Lakes Board will continue to be directly involved and responsible for supporting that transition. And those folks that have developed relationships with that group will get to enjoy working with and through that trusted mechanism to develop that understanding with a new operator as well. And we know there's a lot of work there to go. This is, as I said, this is a part of the process. We're certainly not at the end of the process. And when we get down to talking with the user groups that there are very specific operational needs, there's gonna be a lot of work due to make sure we transition understanding, knowledge around what their needs are and how they continue to be met appropriately.
And then so like we're going to be getting a lot of, you know, community feedback. We've had the clarity on the lounge, which was a topic that certainly filled up the inbox. But as we get some clarity or as we discover things in our conversations, like currently there's a crafted contract, are we able to work through and amend that contract at this stage and, and find a way to adapt and reflect the needs of our community?
Yeah, I, I think our first approach to that would be to evaluate whether or not the current contract meets those needs. Again, we've designed a contract specifically for the purpose of meeting our needs of our contract and I believe that we can accommodate that. And we have enshrined protection for the existing leaseholders and user groups directly into that contract that I believe would capture the vast majority of those pieces. I do not believe, again, that we would be able to successfully manage negotiating a contract where we're trying to reflect the individual preferences of dozens of user groups. So I'm not suggesting that that's what you're describing, but there are some limitations to, to that as well. If there were major pieces of feedback from the community that are structural in terms of, I think, governance level approaches to this, could the contract be adjusted? Absolutely. And ultimately, is at the discretion of all parties. Rocky County, YMCA and Town of Cochrane.
And so one of the questions I was asked today was, you know, what if a user group is in place or a vendor, someone is there? We're in the process and they're suddenly finding that, you know, they don't have a home there anymore or something has, has changed the model. What's their appeal mechanism? I mean, you know, in the current model, if, and it's run by this separate not-for-profit, a separate board of governance, but kind of the separate appeal model is to be able to reach out to, to Town Council, Rocky View County Council and kind of, you know, have that ear. What is the appeal model for vendors, user groups that are gonna be engaging with the Y? Are they still going to be able to, you know, appeal to the respective councils or what's the opportunity there?
Yeah, so for any resident. Um, yeah, so for any resident or business in Cochrane, that's always an opportunity for them to express concerns to their council and that would absolutely remain. What I would also add is, one of the intentions of the, um, Town of Cochrane administration is we want to become more, um, directly connected to the users. For a long time, we've benefited from, um, great service through the Spray Lakes Board and staff there with some of our really key, um, user groups and stakeholders. We also intend to, um, generate our own direct relationships with those groups so that we can hear directly from them. Um, and then as I described in the reporting portion, uh, of my presentation, administration will be meeting regularly as well with, um, YMCA management, should they be selected, uh, to ensure that the needs of our community as we understand them are met. So absolutely, there would be, um, feedback mechanisms that are maintained, both at the administrative, um, and at the governance level, to ensure we can address concerns, um, as they, as they arise.
Okay, and, and moving on to the governance question, like how is the, the agreement going to be governed? Is it going to be, uh, representatives of the county council, members of our council able to, you know, sit in a committee and to, to govern that agreement? Um, how is, you, you'd mentioned, uh, uh, the Y would be submitting kind of an annual budget. And so then that would be approved by this committee or by our budget processes? Um, you know, big picture, what is, and this isn't a space that I don't understand yet. How is our councils going to be able to deliberately, you know, govern this and to be able to, in some way, affect service levels?
Yeah, so, um, uh, the short answer to that is, um, Town of Cochrane Council will be the governing, um, oversight body, um, with, um, agreements and support from Rocky View County. Um, so, again, much the way, um, uh, that it is now, um, uh, the county, uh, and the town have a, a cost-sharing agreement which indicates that the operational deficits will be shared based on usage, that will be maintained. So there's that govern- uh, governance mechanism in place and already agreed to in that way. Uh, we will continue to have, um, o- ownership level conversations, um, that we do now on a regular basis through our inter-municipal committee and otherwise. Uh, but the Town of Cochrane will be the agent of the owners in interacting with the YMCA.
Okay, and so are we looking to establish like a deliberate council committee to head that up? My concerns is I, I just don't want it to, for us as council, as the representatives of our, our residents, to not be able to have some sort of influence over, you know, direct influence over setting the budget and the service levels?
Um, that has not, at this point, been considered. That would be, I think, something that council could, um, have conversation. There's nothing in this agreement that would preclude, um, the ownership from organizing themselves however they would wish, you know, in order to oversee, uh, their obligations under the agreement.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much, uh, for your responses, Mr. Derekot. Um, I think I probably asked too many questions since, uh, our intent tonight is to hear the questions of our community, so thank you.
Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, I'll, I'll be, I'll try to be brief because I agree, we're here for a public hearing and we should get to it, I want to get to that. The, the only, I think I have three or four unique things that haven't been asked already. And the first one is about the On the Rocks Lounge, and that's simply the viability of, of the space. I, it won't be operated by the YMCA, and so theoretically, a third party would have to come in and operate it, pay rent to the YMCA, I believe, to, um, uh, to operate in that space, is that correct? Do we know what the rent would be?
Yeah, uh, through the Chair to Counselor Wilson, that is one potential outcome. The YMCA has just, um, what they've stated is they're committed to ensuring the ongoing functionality of that space, not specifically identifying that it would have to be a third party. Uh, for several years before, it was operated on a volunteer basis, et cetera. There are, uh, a number of potential outcomes. What the YMCA do will, um, is work with the key stakeholders and key users, evaluate the opportunities, and they're committed to finding a model that ensures that that continues to operate appropriately. A third-party model is one of the potentials. I will say, my understanding is, is that has been, um, attempted in the past and has not been successful. And so I don't know that there's anything that has changed at this point to make that a likely outcome, uh, but it is certainly, uh, open to consideration.
So the other option I just heard was the volunteer-driven?
I, I just use that as an example, they're really open to any number of potential, um, models that, um, might, might do that. They want to sit, understand fully how it runs now, what the, um, hours are, and, and there's, there's a whole list of kind of more finite questions, um, that we've, than we've delved into at this point, that I think would help answer that question. Um, but again, I think the most important point is, yes, a third-party model, if it makes sense. Yes, to other alternatives, if they make sense, most importantly, that the lounge will continue.
Okay, and the YMCA is obviously sensitive to the fact that we've had, um, viability issues with it in the past.
They are aware.
No kitchen-associated windows, uh,
Yep.
on and on and on, we can go through the list.
They are aware of those limitations, yes.
Okay, uh, it'd be great to hear more about that. Um, on the manag- management fee topic, so Counselor Nagel was asking about, uh, what does the YMCA get out of this? What is the not-for-profit, what's their, what's their interest in doing this? And my understanding is there must be a management fee involved, they must be paid something for operating the facility? What, what is, what do, what, what does YMCA gain from this?
Yeah, thank you, I really appreciate this, um, question, Counselor Wilson, because I think it is at the heart of why the YMCA is at the table now. They want to make community impact, they want to make communities better, healthier, more inclusive. And they see an opportunity here to bring that mission to our community and support many of those overlapping values as part of it. This is not a commercial enterprise for them. Um, the mechanism of recreation management is a tool, not an outcome or an objective. There is no direct management fee, we are not paying the YMCA X amount of dollars to operate this. They generate that through the operation, um, of, of the facility. Um, so what are they getting out of this? An opportunity to come make our community better. That's, I'm, I'm trying to reflect, I don't, it's a little bit difficult for me to speak on behalf of the YMCA, but I believe that that's what they would, um, express if they were standing here.
And just one more clarifying question on that and I'll move on. You, you said that the only way they would take money out of the facility is if both the operational and the capital requirements were paid for first, which to me sounds crazy because we'll never, uh, the capital requirements will never be, uh, exceeded year by year, like we can just be certain of that?
That is correct, and they're not anticipating that, which again, I'm just reflecting to them, that their objective here is not to come and make money off of the Cochrane community that somehow subsidizes their efforts in, in the city. That's not, um, at all what they're, um, interested in. They want to come and be a full neighbor, partner, participant in our community. They've evaluated our community as a, as a wonderful potential partner in their mission, which, as I said, building great communities.
Okay, I'll leave that one alone for now. The exit provision, we've already talked about that, and that's simply that if, if, uh, uh, we, we joined up and decided we weren't happy with the arrangement, six months notice, no, uh, termination for convenience costs, it would just be a simple notification and we're out six months later?
That's correct.
And what's our, our current situation is?
Identical.
Would we have to give the current board theoretically six months notice? It is identical.
And when I speak of that six-month transition period, that's what I'm referring to in part.
Oh, that's part of the current contract, okay.
That we would have to give that six-month notice, yes.
Okay, and then my fin- my only final, unique thought is the, the whole user pay philosophy question, which is something that I think council as a whole probably should have talked about before on this. I, um, the cost recovery question, which is just simply, even under the current, uh, arrangement, we could have decided at any point that, um, if we didn't want to lose a million dollars a year in subsidized operational costs, we could just jack the user prices up and to whatever it takes to achieve that. Obviously, that's not something we wanted to do, and so we've landed where we are currently, I suppose. Indirectly, it's not like we, as a council, set the user fees, but we could give that direction to the board to cost, to cost recovery. Really what I'm getting at here is, um, what is the philosophy of, of our community? And that in some ways, we talk about users paying for themselves across different dynamics in our community. And we've actually tried as a council to link costs with user benefits. In this case, recreation, which is a unique one, um, almost like a library, I'd say, where, uh, you, you can't really distill exactly who uses it all the time. Um, and so there is gonna be some subsidy involved there. Um, it just, it sounds to me, my question is, if we go to the YMCA, it sounds like we're trying to get more to a cost recovery point where taxpayers that aren't using the facility, aren't subsidizing the facility, is that?
I would actually say, I'm sorry, Counselor Wilson, I, um, was too excited to answer, I tried to jump in on you a couple of times there, I apologize. Um, I would actually say that you, what, what you said at the beginning is actually true, which is that decision lies with council, um, ultimately through their annual budgeting process and is as it is today. Like you said, you, you as a body could make that choice at any given time to, um, change that significantly, um, as part of, uh, as part of your process. Um, what I will say is, even if there was no mandate to change the cost recovery model, and I want to give great credit to that facility, in terms of recreational complexes of this nature, they have performed very well in the cost recovery realm, um, their performance has been strong. Uh, the YMCA is first in class in terms of operational, um, op- opportunities and has unique organizational capacities, that even if council was to maintain their current stance on, um, cost recovery, that, um, I still believe there would be a financial improvement. It would be limited to what council's tolerances may be, but I still think there's some positives to be gained there, even if there was no change in council's mandate.
Last question and I'll stop on user fees, seventy-five-dollar joining fee, would that apply to current membership holders? What, or is that only new membership?
My under- my understanding is that would only be brand-new members.
Okay, and drop-in fee changes, we haven't talked about that, and any idea on the drop-in fees for non-members?
That, that would be and, and is, um, managed by the operator as it is today. We don't have any direct influence on, on that, nor would we, um, should the, uh, YMCA, uh, take over operations.
Okay, I'll stop, thank you.
Counselor Flowers.
I only have a couple, 'cause most of them were answered, but on the seventy-five-dollar signup fee, a lot of the curlers, I think, just belong to the curling, they don't belong to the whole center.
Yep.
Would they have to pay it too, or not?
Nope, absolutely not. If you are participating simply through a user group, a swim club, or a hockey association, um, any group that was renting the facility, you are not obligated to also be a member, so there's no change there.
Okay, and my other one was about the pool. It costs so much money to run the pool. Do they have good experience in that and trying to make it more cost-effective and cheaper to run?
Through the Chair to Counselor Flowers, uh, the YMCA has exceptional experience in operating large-scale aquatic centers. Uh, I think they know, like any other operator, that pools are not where you make your financial gains. Um, I'm co- uh, excuse me, I'm confident that they can operate it as efficiently or as effectively as any operator.
Great, thanks for the input, and I too, I'm looking forward to hearing from everyone.
Counselor Nagel, follow-up question?
Yep, follow-up questions to, uh, your responses to Counselor Wilson. I really wanted to drill in to understand, um, this relationship between the operating capital costs and the potential for a transfer out of Cochrane. Um, not trying to take a position or engage in to be able to unders- to explain my context for this question. I'm really just trying to make sure that there's no way that the rec center can be used to generate profits to then send out of Cochrane. So that's what I'm trying to understand. Um, so where in the current proposed agreement is it stated that oper- operating and capital costs for the Cochrane facility have to be met before any transfers can happen, uh, out of the rec center?
Yeah, I, uh, you, you'll have to bear with me, I don't know the exact, um, section, and I can go and verify that, Counselor Nagel. Uh, but basically, as I said, the arrangement is such that all financial obligations of the facility must be met, uh, before any, uh, other financial considerations would be given.
And was there not some sort of, um, cost-sharing mechanism where the YMCA has centralized management that the Cochrane facility will be utilizing? And, and so if there is a centralized administrative mechanism, uh, would contributions to that centralized mechanism be included in the operation expenses that need to be met? Because that would be a transfer out.
Yeah, thank you, i- i- I, I think if you were to consider, um, that, I, I, I would agree with you, um, that, yes, uh, the, um, central, um, mechanism, their finance department, H I, H R I T., that operate all of their facilities, this facility would contribute accordingly to access those services. So indirectly, um, that would, they would participate in that model, yes.
And so that contribution to the centralized, shared administrat- uh, administrative, uh, function would occur as part of meeting the operational commitments of this facility?
It, it would, um, and I think I would add to that, as I, um, tried to articulate before, is to the net benefit of Cochrane financially.
And so do we have any, uh, understanding or controls in this agreement as to how large that transfer to that administrative function, uh, will be?
We absolutely do, through every annual budget, they must submit, um, which would include any and all costs related to operation of that facility, whether they're such centralized or not. So council would every year be able to review and oversee and make decisions relative to those mechanisms, absolutely.
And so do we, prior to us waiting for an annual budget to be proposed, do we know how large that transfer would be at this point in time prior to us, um, agreeing to this?
I, I don't have a specific number, that's not a, um, line of inquiry that we've engaged in at this stage. I can, prior to this, coming back to council for consideration, I can see what I can do to generate some information relative that, to that question. It may be a little bit complicated as it's soft costs throughout their service provision, uh, but I will see what I can find out.
Yeah, so as, as, uh, as a fact-finding inquiry, I'd, I'd love to see what's happening in other facilities, because if that's a one to five percent contribution, it's, you know, very small. But if I were to see that other facilities are contributing thirty percent into the, into the, uh, into the broader association, it changes everything.
Yep.
Okay, uh, and I think that's it, thank you.
Okay, that just leaves me, um, and I, most of my questions have been asked and answered already. Um, just a couple, I had a question around Cochrane first, you've answered that, Cochrane residents first. Um, oversight, I think you've gone into great detail on that. Um, history, we haven't talked about the history. Uh, this commu- this facility was built by Cochranites for Cochranites. Um, how will that, has there been a discussion around the history and how will it be recognized, honored? Uh, the legacy wall, that type of thing?
Absolutely, um, so, uh, I'll, I'll answer that in a few ways. Um, uh, I'll start with the name of this facility, for example, the Spray Lake Center, which is under an existing naming agreement, um, supported, um, through the Molson's family and for many years have been tremendous supporters of, uh, the community and that facility. Uh, those arrangements, first of all, would all be honored, and second, the YMCA has enthusiastically entered into preliminary conversations, um, with, um, you know, that philanthropic family as, as part of their ongoing, um, connection to, to that facility. As an example of, uh, the YMCA has no interest in, um, erasing, changing, devaluing any of the history. They want to participate, um, in, uh, in that and keep it ongoing. Um, there, there already is some, um, I guess I would call them legacy walls in the facility that tell the story and tell the history. Those are all anticipated to remain and be enhanced as this, um, is a potential significant shift. We do want to capture, um, that community story and history as, um, as, as part of that. So, um, the other element I would say is, um, this may seem like a small thing, but I think it's just, again, uh, an extension of the goodwill I think we could expect from the YMCA is, the current SLS Board has a program of some lifetime members from long-term volunteers, um, board members, et cetera. And the YMCA will be honoring all of those lifetime members with, um, similar lifetime memberships as part of this process. So they're fully committed to honoring the contributions of the community, um, you know, families, like I said, like the Molson's families and others who've participated in, um, blessing our community with this incredible asset.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, there's been, uh, a lot of the community discussions I've been a part of and some of the user group meetings we've, uh, undertaken. There's been a lot of fear about, uh, the YMCA bringing their model as people are reading it off the website or looking at fees that are generated and charged in Calgary and thinking that that's what's gonna come to Cochrane. Um, can you speak about, um, that? Is that the case? Um, and I, the way I understand it currently is that, um, we have asked operators to operate our facility as is, not asking for them to come in and change things to have something, some efficiencies gained. Can you maybe clarify that?
Absolutely, um, as, as you described there, this was not a request for programming ideas or programming support. This was purely managerial, operational, financial, um, in nature. Uh, and so, uh, the proponents that responded to the RFP were invited to, um, evaluate our, um, facility and its program offerings and to tell us how they could participate in the existing state and or improve or enhance, um, those realities, uh, as, as part of it. Uh, uh, up to and including, again, I have the benefit now of a few recent, um, stakeholder meetings that I didn't even a few weeks ago, where the YMCA was, uh, able to have conversations with, um, in this case, minor hockey around, um, I mentioned the way that, um, ice hockey tournaments are dealt with in the city, um, through the YMCA, and they're very different than, um, the way that YMCA would approach it here, because Cochrane is a very, very different environment than the city of Cal- The way that YMCA would approach it here, because Cochrane is a very, very different environment than the city of Calgary where there is. A number of competing ice using uh, ice um, providing organizations where in Cochrane. There's not, there's a single provider, and so they will take a different community centered approach. Uh, and not just add the um, as you said, the lens that works in. Neighborhood and or the city of Calgary, um, a facility and just superimpose it on our facility, they'll work from a community centered focus. And build out from there.
So if I can be more clear, um, it costs three hundred, what, three hundred and twenty dollars an hour to rent ice in Calgary? That doesn't mean it's going to cost three hundred and twenty dollars an hour in Cochrane in January if this were to go through.
Yeah, certainly not overnight and not unless we collectively decided as a community that that was in the best interests of the community.
And by overnight, you mean uh, the owners have the ability to dictate the increments in which that? Uh, would would increase through the budget?
Completely guided by the owners, ultimately town council, uh, through the budget process, yes.
Yeah, okay, so there's no cliff that's coming that is SLS to YMCA. And all of a sudden, it's that model here and we're. I think that's the, we're putting a blender and everything we've built in twenty-five years is up in the air.
Absolutely, the way the, the way I've heard the YMCA articulate this in the group meetings is that they will. Seek first to understand fully how all the programs and how all the facility mechanisms interact. Uh, and then participate in um, the hopefully continued success of that facility in the best possible way.
Okay, I think that uh, I'll I'll leave my last one for the end. Um, I think that, oh, Counselor Reed, you have one last question, we'll get to the public?
Yep, just one last question, so again, I wanted to clarify, so currently, all the citizens of Cochrane are subsidizing. The users of Spray Lakes to the tune of one point two million. And one of the goals of this would be to eliminate that subsidy in some way. And so that was the point, and then, does the YMCA have a program for low income households? Uh, so that those families or children can participate in in the services provided by a facility like this?
Thank you through the chair, Counselor Reed, absolutely, the YMCA has a very robust. Belief in accessi- accessibility for all community members, including some financial support programs that. Um, would uh, allow those that may not otherwise have the means to continue to access the facility and its programs.
Okay, thank you. Okay, exhaust the council portion of the questions, thank you, Mr. Derek Cott. Uh, I'll go to the speakers list. Um, and I just uh, want to uh, be clear, if you're representing someone else, I understand there's a few people that are going to be representing other individuals. Uh, we will need written consent from that individual for you to represent them here tonight. Um, and then again, back to the five minutes for individuals, ten minutes for um, groups, and if it's. And I'm just going to pick one, if if it's, well, if it's group A. And someone's representing them for ten minutes and then someone else comes up and says, I'm also group A and I'm representing them. That doesn't work, it's one spokesperson for ten minutes and then everyone else gets five minutes in that, so just wanted to be clear on that. I don't think that's what anyone was going to try to do, I just wanted to be clear on that. Um, so let's get to it, uh, first speaker is Erica Cubic. And I'm going to do my best on getting all of these pronunciations of names correct, hopefully I've nailed yours. That was an endorsement.
Yeah, thank you, you did great, Cubic is how, exactly how you say it, I often get.
Oh, awesome, thank you.
Kabik and a bunch of other things, so.
Take it away, Erica.
Thank you, um, my name is Erica Cubic, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Cochrane Water Ninjas, uh, which is actually a lifesaving sport club based out of Cochrane here. Um, as we've heard here tonight and at the last council meeting, um, the proposed takeover of the YMCA. Um, is actually um, intended to have little to no impact on the user groups. I don't know how to change these slides, oh, there, oh. Um, but what we also heard uh, from one of the other counselors at the last meeting is that the devil is often in the details. And I couldn't agree more in this case, um, the potential takeover of the operations of this facility. And potential future name change of this club would actually result in the dissolution of our club. So I'm just going to take a second and talk about what lifesaving sport is, some people may not uh, be familiar with it. Um, this sport, you might see these kids competing at the pool, they're. Often pulling mannequins across the pool or pulling each other, towing each other on what I call the Baywatch tubes. Um, this sport is actually first learned for humanitarian purposes, they're learning lifesaving skills. And then they actually apply this to competition and compete in this sport. Um, what you may not realize, uh, because the sport is not that well known, is that these athletes. Are going on um, to compete at the provincial, national, and actually international level. They're producing some of the finest athletes in this country. The Water Ninjas was actually formed uh, here locally in two thousand and eleven with eight participants. It now has a hundred and twenty-five swimmers of all different age groups. It is not an independent user group, it's actually currently run by Spray Lakes. Um, and as you saw, I know the, all the users here tonight can't actually see it, but one of the first slides, there's actually a lot of parent-child. Combination athletes on this team, so you'll see parents competing with their kids on relay teams, you'll see them competing against their kids, or you'll see them competing individually. It's a really unique sport in that you can compete throughout your life, um, up to uh, you know, decades, so. Another thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, um, a lot of facilities actually have lifeguarding shortages. What's unique about this club is that fourteen Water Ninjas are actually on staff at Spray Lakes, so these kids are actually feeding into and becoming the lifeguards on deck. Um, I mentioned that these kids and these athletes are being recognized at all levels, um, if you go into the swimming pool up on the wall. There's provincial banners, um, the last four years, that banner has actually been held by the Water Ninjas. Um, this club has also been the top um, three um, teams in Canada for the last four years, we've sent. Two athletes to Worlds, one came home with a silver medal last year, and we're actually sending seven athletes to compete on Team Canada uh, next year and this year. So why is the the future of this club at stake? Well, the YMCA actually has its own club, it's called the Guardians. And um, I have absolutely no disrespect for the Guardians, but they are a very different club, they're kind of in their infancy stage, it's only been around for a couple of years. Whereas as I just illustrated, the Water Ninjas have been around for for quite a while. Um, the Guardians is growing and it's a Calgary based club, they're getting lots of support and actually some of the Water Ninjas that were. With the Cochrane Club have gone on to the Guardians to try to grow the awareness in this sport. But the culture, the community, um, and and kind of what they've created in Cochrane is very unique. If I had to relate it to hockey, it's kind of like comparing a Timbits team to a double A triple A team, they're very. Different stages of their life cycle, there's, it's still the same sport, I have no disrespect for that club whatsoever. But the kids that are Cochrane Water Ninjas are passionate about being a Water Ninja. My daughter, um, she's going to be a teenager this year, has said if she has to become a wa- a Guardian, she would quit the sport tomorrow, which. When you look at the mental health of teenage girls is devastating to me. Um, why is this a requirement? The Lifesaving Society of Alberta is the governing body of these, this sport. They um, from what I understand, required this for insurance purposes and to ensure um, sufficient pool um, capacity. So if the YMCA became the operator and rebranded as a YMCA, this club has to cease to exist. Um, like I said, it's devastating because the Water Ninjas have created something very special and very unique in this community. Um, I know they talked about having a five year agreement for the name. Um, of the Spray Lakes facility, of which we are two and a half years into. But as we talked about here tonight, there are things like exit clauses in here which could result in rebranding of the YMCA from the the Spray Lake name. Uh, um, is how I understand it, so our ask here tonight is that if Spray Lakes were taken over. By the YMCA, that there's a unique naming convention for the YMCA, such as YMCA Cochrane. That would give us the independent nature that would allow these clubs to continue to exist. Um, these kids, like I said, are contributing to this community, they're the volunteers in this community, they're the lifeguards on deck. And we're just looking for some support, so that's our ask here this evening. I don't know if you have any questions, I can try to help answer anything.
Okay. I know everybody wants to clap and applaud, but it's going to make the night a lot longer. If we do that after every single speaker, I would just ask for you to refrain from that, or booing, please. Thank you, you uh, you nailed your five minutes, uh, Counselor Fideko.
Uh, first of all, congratulations to the Water Ninjas for your progress, growth um, and success that you guys have achieved over the years. Um, one quick question, if um, I know that Mr. Derek Cott had earlier stated that, you know. And Counselor McFadden alluded to it as well, when talking about amending the contract to protect certain user groups. Would it be a benefit if the Cochrane Water Ninjas was actually named as an amendment to be protected? Would that um, help support the group rather than considering that it could be transitioned into the Guardians or something along that line?
I think it's actually above that level, um, from what I understand, it's with the Lifesaving Society of Alberta. Excuse me, the Northwest Territories, which is the governing body, and we have approached them um, about this issue, but. Whether that that can be changed or not is is kind of out of our hands, um, we're obviously appealing that avenue as well. Um, protecting them eh, would be a a step in the right direction. But really, I think it's having that independent naming convention that, from what we understand, is um, the biggest hurdle.
Okay, thank you, I don't see any other questions from council, thank you for your presentation.
Question just as a public member, or is that not allowed?
Well, you're you're at the podium if it's a quick one.
Absolutely, um, I used to teach um, fitness classes throughout the city and the YMCA had a very distinct model where you had to be certified under their. Um, credentials to be able to teach at the YMCA. Do you know if the current um, staff are going to be required to have those same credentials, or will they? Be asked to recertify under the YMCA? And will the YMCA pay for that? I guess it's just something I wanted to raise as I was sitting here this evening.
Good question, I think we can note that for administration to follow up on, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next speaker, Joanne Maylot. Joanne, did I get your last name right? No.
No, you didn't.
I'm one for two so far, please, Joanne.
Joanne Mayet.
Mayet, okay.
Yes.
I know in the future.
I'm speaking here as a private individual tonight. Uh, firstly, I'd like to thank the mayor and town council for holding this public hearing. While it has been suggested that a smooth transition period and an enhanced visitor experience when the YMCA takes over. The operation of the Spray Lakes facility, there's a lack of concrete detail on how that will be accomplished. Nothing will change, but I would argue we already know there are going to be changes. We know in the simplest terms, there are only two ways to improve your bottom line. And that's to increase your rates or reduce your costs. We know that membership and rental rates will increase to match the current rates offered at the YMCA. And that is roughly a ten percent increase. Members will also have to pay a seventy-five percent, sorry, a seventy-five dollar join up fee. Which was clarified to new members only, but I'm wondering if that's actually in black and white, white. It's also been suggested that only ten or so management jobs will be lost, but I believe this is an understatement. Firstly, that's ten good jobs leaving our community and affecting our local economy negatively. Secondly, the YMCA relies on volunteers to run their in-house programs. What happens to the current programs at Spray Lakes run by paid certified instructors? Replacing certified instructors with volunteers seems to be a lowering of standards, not improving them. Spray Lakes is always operated with sports partnerships. The YMCA is based on a membership model and runs their own programs with volunteers. How long is an independent Spray Lakes that runs outside of the YMCA model going to remain outside their system? Who decides what programs stay or goes? Cochrane will have no representation at the YMCA Calgary. Now, curling is my big interest. But the YMCA has no experience with curling, nor does it have an existing relationship with curling associations. Or hockey associations in Alberta. We have a curling gem here in Cochrane. In every bondspill I have participated in, visitors from out of town have commented on the great condition of our ice. And the facilities in the curling complex. How exactly can the YMCA make our curling program better? Do we have any written guarantee that they will not convert the curling sheets into a hockey arena? We know that the YMCA has said they will not operate or allow a third party to operate the Curling on the Rocks Lounge. Contrary to what was said tonight. The lounge acts as an important gathering place for curling and hockey fans before and after games. For conversation, tea, coffee, snacks, pizza, and a drink if they care to do so. Hockey and volleyball tournaments, curling bondspills, and many other groups have their staging areas, meals, and award ceremonies in that lounge. Birthday parties, anniversary parties, seminars, coaching workshops take place in that room. It would be a huge loss to many user groups. However, the one thing I believe that will not change is the cost to the town. In two thousand and twenty-four, Spray Lakes recouped ninety-two percent of their costs. The best record for a facility with a pool in Alberta. We should be very proud of that record and the work of the Spray Lakes Society and staff in achieving that. This left a shortfall of roughly eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, less the three hundred thousand dollar contribution from Rocky View. Although the town contributed three point five million plus or minus towards the cost of running Spray Lakes. The majority of that, the two point three million, was for capital costs. Regardless of the operator, the town will still be responsible for those costs. The proposal suggests that costs will be reduced to one point six million a year, but is that realistic? The building will always be getting older and capital costs and improvements. Will not decrease. The town also remains responsible to fund any operational shortfalls, I don't see how there can be any savings. This facility is the heart of our community, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the people who. Twenty, fifteen, ten years ago, denoted, uh, devoted. Or donated their time and efforts, blood, sweat, and tears to make this facility a reality. Respectfully, I would recommend you do not turn over the operation of the YM, to the YMCA. And instead retain the homegrown character of Spray Lakes. And that Spray Lakes remain under the control of the people of Cochrane, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, don't see any lights on, I'm just going to keep talking over the, over the clapping, uh, thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Uh, Tyler Hill is next, I don't see any questions for you, Joanne, thank you.
Uh, good evening, everybody, I'd like to say thank you for council, mayor, and everyone that's in attendance tonight that's from our town. Uh, this is a very big decision, um, it keeps ga- gathering um, more uh, more momentum. Uh, please excuse me though here, uh, I'm recovering from a serious accident and have a brain injury, so I'm extremely nervous, which isn't normal. And uh, trying to deal with the people.
You're doing great.
I'm also here representing a Tech X Brain Collective. And uh, I would like to start here uh, with Spray Lakes, uh, the Spray Lakes Sawmill Center is one of Cochrane's biggest stages. From the Kimit Cup, Footstock, Cochrane Generals, Cochrane Minor Hockey, Figure Skating Galas, Public Skating. Adult Rec Leagues, Summer Camps, Bull Riding, Wrestling, Trade Shows, Farmers Markets, Classic Car Shows, the list grows every season. Our community built this place from scratch and keeps it vibrant. The more I learn, the more something feels off, given the significance of uh, this facility and its connection to the community. Why weren't big signs set up at the, at the facility to engage the users? I understand not every decision can, uh, can't involve the whole town, but this one is serious. Having, having attended the last meeting where the topic was presented, I believe this place should have been packed, standing room only out the door. The lack of transparency feels like there's another agenda and taxpayers, members, and user groups were left in the dark in my opinion. Cochrane, Cochrane's Emergency Broadcast System alerts residents when safety is at stake, such as the water sewer line incident in recent years. So why not the same system invite citizens to an important meeting like this? Since that coun- or since that council meeting. I have two questions that have surfaced and that regard seniors fees. And the volunteer positions that the YMCA currently uses to operate the facility. And how they would connect to any um, jobs uh, currently uh, being paid.
Excuse me for a minute.
Before we even think of handing over the keys, let's recognize what we already have, a community hub. Whose sheer foot traffic is a marketer's dream, tasteful advertising and sponsorships done right could unlock fresh revenue to fund upgrades without burdening taxpayers. Big brands want exposure to these crowds, let's capture the value for Cochrane, not an outside operator. If the YMCA has been successful in operating rec centers, then Cochrane can too. Uh, I request uh, council pause the YMCA uh, decision for at least six months and convene a private working session. With the mayor and council and our Tech X Brain Collective outlining our state of the art proposal that hasn't been seen yet. Tech X Brain is a decentralized collective created by people living with invisible disabilities, grant writers, lawyers, mark- grant writers, lawyers, marketers, technologists, ready to deliver a state-of-the-art yet simple roadmap for SLS. Some components -- sorry, pardon me. Some components of this working session proposal will be the value and benefit of forming a special assessment team plus the goals and strategy, a revolutionary management strategy, transparent governance that keeps control local, a revenue growth through modern advertising, naming rights, and sensor-driven efficiencies, protection of user fees and existing jobs, fundraising for a new facility, and much more. I'm almost done. We honor everyone who made SLS possible, the founders, such as Totem Group, Spray Lakes Sawmills, the town of Cochrane, Ronnieview County -- sorry, Rocky View County, the fundraisers, volunteers, donors, and we believe the next chapter should be written in the same community spirit, not in closed sessions. Cochrane has never shied away from rolling up its sleeves. Let's pause and engage the people who raised the walls and build the best possible experience for everyone who skates, swims, and gathers here. Pardon me on my comment about closed doors. That's just the proposal side of things. So you guys can see it as council and go from there with it, and then open it up to the public. So thank you on behalf of the Tech X Brain Collective and myself, Tyler Hill.
Thank you, Tyler. Don't see any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry Lynn.
Good evening and thank you. I'm here to oppose the YMCA being given operation of Spray Lakes. And I'll try to not be too redundant over things that have already been mentioned. Cochrane does have a sense of community that is stronger than anything I have ever experienced living across Canada as well as in the U.S. At the heart is Spray Lakes Centre, built by the grassroots community over the last quarter century. I have learned the history of the centre with its "Made in Cochrane" pride and how it stands as a central hub for sports and social activities in our community. It is recognized throughout the province as a unique facility for a town of our size especially. So why would we want to give control over the operations to a Calgary organization? We have a society that was incorporated for the sole purpose of operating the centre, the Spray Lakes Sawmill Recreation Park Society. I attended the AGM in April. The record does show, as Joanne mentioned, an enviable 92% cost recovery, putting the centre in the top percentile of the industry. There were over a million and a half visits, and that does not include individuals participating in user group activities like hockey and curling. Are there issues of how to increase cost recovery? Yes, but the society was never originally directed or required, expected to be able to recover all of the costs of operating the centre, until it was. When the society initially took over operations, there was no swimming pool. Until that point, they covered their costs and even built a sizable reserve. There is no community in Canada that fully recovers costs when they have a pool. So as I see it, now we reach a point where the society should be upping its game through donations and grants to offset these costs. And they do have the tools in their toolkits to go ahead and do that. Are we here looking at the outsourcing of the operations for the next 25 years to the YMCA of Calgary with no little input during the process? We are given a standard line that says, "There will be no interruption to current recreation services during transition, but there is no promise that the user groups won't be adversely affected once the YMCA is totally in charge in '26." The proposal will negatively affect the economy of Cochrane as it redirects spending from town to Calgary. There will be a loss of jobs as residents of our community who are currently employed will be disrupted. Students who have part-time jobs working at the front desk will lose that opportunity to gain work experience as they are replaced by volunteers. Volunteers are a large part of the YMCA mantra, yet it is no secret that volunteerism is down everywhere. In a presentation by town on May 20th, after we heard about the Y proposal, the Parks Culture and Active Living Master Plan stated, "Declining volunteerism is stretching grassroots capacity and event support." So where are the volunteers going to come from for the Y to operate Spray Lakes? Town and Rocky View talk about enhancing recreation service delivery, but not how they will do it. By having the Y use non-professional volunteers who are not qualified or certified instructors for specific programs? Is that how? The Reeve from Rocky View says, quote, "Once the agreement is in place, the Y will begin extensive stakeholder engagement with the current user groups of the facility, such as the Cochrane Curling Club and other longstanding facility partners." In my opinion, that's too late. She further stated, "We are committed to transparency and open communication through the process." Then proceeds to refer you to the YMCA Calgary website for further insight to the transition. Sorry, but that doesn't give me a positive impression that the powers-to-be want to work with the community that has so much at stake.
Sherry, are you -- you're out of time?
Okay, I just want to thank you again, and I believe that you should put off any decision for at least four to six months. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Cindy Mintenko Blackman? Mintenko?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Janong, council members, and fellow residents of Cochrane. My name is Cindy Mintenko Blackman, and I serve as the facilities chair for the Cochrane Curling Club. I'm here today to speak about the vital role of the On the Rocks Lounge in supporting the sport of curling. I have three minutes here to tell you why we need to keep the lounge for our competitive sport, the competitive part of our sporting facility. But you guys have already heard all of this, and I just want to say thank you for not only taking the time to respond to everybody, but for all of the members and all of the Cochrane residents that have sent in their responses. So I just want to say thank you instead of taking us more time.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
I appreciate that. Thank you. I don't see any.
Yeah, I think you've heard it all, so yeah, and you'll hear more.
Importance of the lounge. Got it. Kendall Waiting.
Well, I certainly love to have had as much time as Mr. Durkot, but I do have five minutes, so I'll try and make sure I keep it within that. Good afternoon, or good evening to everyone here, to mayor, council, and everyone that's come. My name is Kendall Waiting, and I come here as the president of the Cochrane Curling Club. I've been in this community for almost 30 years, and I speak to you tonight as a longtime volunteer, neighbor, and advocate for this community. Over the years, I've had many roles, including roles with Cochrane Minor Hockey, the Cochrane Referees Association, the Lions Club, the Legion, Cochrane McSlow Pitch, and the list goes on. Like many in this room, I have worked to help shape this community, support its continued success. And as my grandfather said to me when I was a kid, "Kendall, you can live in a community, or you can help build a community," and Waiting's helped build communities. It is in that spirit that I'm here tonight to express my opposition to the proposed operational takeover of the Spray Lakes Sawmill by the YMCA. At first glance, this proposal seems like a step forward. But in truth, it makes a drastic shift away from local stewardship, away from community ownership, and away from the founding vision of the SLSC. Let's talk about that vision. SLSC wasn't built by a distant organization. It was built by Cochrane. Families like the Kindles, the Ervings, the Coots, the Shellies, the Thurogids, and the Majeks. They led this grassroots resurgence and belief in recreation that should be by the people, for the people of Cochrane. This vision became reality through volunteer hours, donations, and years of cooperative leadership. Now we're being asked to turn that legacy over to an external operator with no local governance, no local programming experience, no financial investment in the transition or in the facility, no enforceable guarantees for user groups, core spaces, or services, and critically, no accountability for the financial promises that have been underlying in this deal. Because, let's be honest, this proposal hinges solely on the financial projections that the YMCA has brought forward. They are promising significant operational profits as a justification for assuming control of the facility. But where's the proof that they can deliver? There's no contractual penalties if they miss their targets. There's no contingency plans if their revenues fall short. No requirement to absorb financial risk. That remains totally on us, the community. And yet, these forecasts are the primary rationale for proceeding. It's equivalent to a handshake deal based on a spreadsheet with no way to enforce the numbers. What happens if these optimistic projections don't materialize? Who ensures the continuity of service programs and access? There is no binding mechanism to hold the YMCA accountable. No performance metrics, no security, no bond, no consequences for the future. But what we do know is who's left to cover the operational deficit under the YMCA management. That's us, the town. This is not responsible stewardship. This is blind trust. Meanwhile, we lose local jobs held by people who live, shop, and contribute here. We lose local control. Decisions that impact Cochrane will now be made in Calgary. And we risk losing vital gathering spaces like On the Rock Lounge, a space with deep operational and social importance, not just for our club, but for the community as a whole and all SLS user groups. The lounge is the heart of our curling community. It's where athletes connect between games, where volunteers fundraise through silent auctions, raffles, and 50/50s, and where we create culture that keeps our 110, 112-year-old club going. Without that space, we cannot hold major bonsbills and major events, and we will lose that fundraising center. Contrary to Mr. Durkot said, we have not received any assurances by the YMCA that they will continue operations, none whatsoever. We have asked repeatedly for those, but all we have received is vague promises to review and discuss. There has been zero, and I repeat, zero, from the YMCA of actual written commitments. And yet, not only that, even if they do, there still is no consequences set out for this if they do not follow it. We are not anti-YMCA. We respect that they have achieved what they have achieved everywhere. But this is not everywhere. This is Cochrane. We support smart partnerships. We support the evolutions. But this proposal is not neither that or smart or balanced. You've heard from us, the user groups who rely on the facility every day, from the SLSC founders, from donors, and from community leaders like the Kimmets. The message is clear: pause, consult, put Cochrane first. This isn't about operations. It's about governance, economics, and accountability. It's about whether we demand enforceable standards from those entrusted with our assets or give them away with no strings attached. So tonight, I respectfully ask council and our community, let's stop this rushed handover. Let's protect what we've built together. Let's demand clarity, accountability, and real partnership. And let's ensure that Spray Lakes Sawmill Centre remains proudly and truly Cochrane's own. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you, Kendall. I just wanted to draw on your experience and opinions, being as firsthand as you are on the On the Rocks Lounge. It seems to be one of the central questions here. Could you just elaborate on how it's operating now? I guess is the first part of the question, and I'll come to, do you believe a third party could operate it even at zero or low rent in the future? I just wanted to get your opinion on that.
Well, I probably should start with a little history. When the Cochrane Curling Club was asked to move to the new facility from the old facility, and one of the tenants was that there would be a lounge present. When we moved to the new facility, of course, we're all aware that money was short, and that was one of the things that was cut. So when we first started into the centre, the first half of the season that we had, our members didn't have a place to socialize after the games. Our community, our members demanded that we provide that to them. And as a response, as volunteers, our board would take out ALGC licenses to pay for that and then randomly volunteer to bartend and slot beer and call up coolers and take down empties so we could fill that void. It wasn't a winning proposition for the club. It was a loss. But we did that for two and a half years, and we also needed to do that for our bonsbills. And we did get success, and we showed that there was some profitability there. As a result of those steps that we worked with Spray Lakes for Spray Lakes to take over that operational shift, because it just became something that us as a club could not do, especially on a volunteer basis. With the SLS taking over, we work hand-in-hand with them to make sure that we have booking that facility and using that facility in a constructive manner around our bonsbills for fundraising events. That facility is run today by Spray Lakes as an integral part of the whole facility. It's not a one-off. So when people talk about they use it for things like a painting class, as an example, just the other night when we were up there, that was one of the things that was used for. Or the team meetings, or team functions, or year-end parties, or anything like that, or birthdays, mine included. That is because of the integral nature of the system and of the way that it is built. How it works exactly, I cannot say. I'm not the operator. But I can say that it doesn't run with a lot of profit. So if you have to engage a third party, and I did mention this directly to the YMCA with Mr. Durkot and Mayor Janong when we met with them on Friday, last Friday, there's little to no profit. You're squeezing a stone. But the ability to make sure that you get some kind of revenue and driven is the ability, the way that it is currently managed, to be an integral part of that. I, as a businessperson, would look at something like that with little rent paying or even none and go, "This isn't a 24-hour-a-day event or restaurants or anything." The facility, as we talked about, has no ability to prepare or be a restaurant-type of facility. It is the ability to serve beverages for us adults to enjoy. I do not see how a business plan with a third-party operator would work. I do not believe that you could fund and do something with this as a volunteer-type of board or volunteers running that as well. From a strict legal perspective, the liabilities of running something like that with volunteers and not having someone paid to watch over that, I mean, doing that for a weekend and for the Lions, as example, at their rodeo is an extensive period of work to even do something like that. I just don't see how that would work very well.
Okay, thank you. So just to summarize, I think what I just heard is it's operating successfully enough as it is. You don't see how it would operate by a third party in the future, and someone like the Cochrane Curling Club would not be interested in operating it even at a no-rent situation in the future.
We just wouldn't have that capacity. You know, and it's currently run, and it opens in the afternoon and runs till close and almost seven days a week, but the particulars of the operations, I couldn't answer it for you, and the Curling Club could not do that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Counselor Pardiko.
Thank you, Kendall. A couple of questions for you, and I want a long list. Just if you could pick a couple of amendments that you, kind of like what you said, that the YMCA has kind of come forward and said, "Yeah, sure, we're willing to work with you, but there's just no written commitments anywhere that exists from what you're looking for." What would be the top two things that you would like to see in this contract if it were to be amended?
Well, we have heard Mr. Durkot say that the agreement currently says "operations as is." But that fundamentally goes against what we heard through this whole process to date. So not dedicating and going back, and again, devils in the details, as we've heard, and not putting certain things of no and no-go not putting certain things of no and no-go's of where we want to go as a community with any operator, whether it's the Y, whether it's the current operator, whether it's a new operator, whatever that is, we need to entrust and set those in there. And part of those things would be, yes, incurring that the lounge is a space that we need to include, but it's more than that. It's around user space. It's around user agreements. User agreements are only one-year terms, so saying we'll honor a user agreement and honor leases, well, for a user, that security is one year. So what is the ability of them to continue? What is the person that teaches Kenscape, the ability to say, I'm going to still have my contract and my ability to enter into that facility and keep my program not being backed and absorbed by the Y? Those are the problems, and all of these questions have to be answered before you sign an agreement. Once an agreement is signed, there's no legal obligation to accept anything anyone else wants to do. The agreement governs you.
Thank you for your comment.
Counselor Nagel.
Yeah, I think you did a great job commenting how the lounge is doing a great job facilitating adult events with liquor licenses, but when you and I spoke on the phone the other day, you also shared how it serves as a family facility. I was wondering if you could comment on that as well?
Well, it's not just, that's what I'm saying. It's a community user space. That space is not just used as a bar. It's not a bar. It's the fabric for that area. I mean, we jokingly say to some of our members that it's their daycare for their kids when they're playing and curling. You look up there, and when I grew up, whether it was at the hockey rink or the curling rink, as your parents or grandparents were on the rink, that's where you hang out. That's the safe. That was the area. You got to know the fellow athletes and the other parents, so it was a community space. That occurs today. That place hosts birthday parties for children, and it hosts team functions for minor hockey or lacrosse or swimming, all of those type of functions. It's cross-functionality. The purpose of that facility in that area is not a focus on alcohol. It is a focus on a community, part of the fabric of what we build and bring together.
Thank you, Kendall.
Thank you.
Kelly Buxton.
Hi. So this is on behalf of my husband, Mike. I wish he was here right now, actually. This is one of the letters he has written, and it is a repeat of, so I apologize for being repetitive, but it's got a little bit of history in it. So as a previous board member, volunteer at the Cochrane Curling Club, I would like to provide some reflection on the circumstances that led us to be at the S L S facility. The move to the Y M C A is outlined in the Town of Cochrane meeting May twentieth will permanently damage curling in Cochrane. In 2010, the Cochrane Curling Club made a press release stating that the decision has been made to relocate to the S L S center. Great. Leading up to that point, not so great. Our facility was located at 109 Fifth Ave. It's now the Lions Event Center. The Town of Cochrane owned the building. The Cochrane Curling Club leased it from the Town of Cochrane for a minimum amount. Phew, I'm nervous. The lease stated it was a responsibility of Cochrane Curling for maintenance, repairs, and the cost of the Lions Club den within the facility forever. The aging structure required upwards of $900,000 in upgrade costs that the Cochrane Curling Club could not afford, and the Town of Cochrane was unwilling to spend. As it turned out, the Town of Cochrane was actively pursuing the redevelopment of the entire area, including the rodeo grounds. Why else would we have to move? Why not rewrite our lease and fix the facility? It was way more expensive to move us. In the end, the Town of Cochrane requested we move to the S L S facility. There was a lot to consider. Curling is as much a social activity as it is a sport. A large part of the appeal to me is the social side. There was much negotiation with all involved. For the Cochrane Curling, it was about maintaining our identity, and one of those right things is the lounge. I personally discussed this with the S L S manager of the day, Robin Mitchell. We discussed who would be responsible for the lounge. It was agreed the facility would operate the lounge. Frankly, not having a lounge would have been a deal breaker at the time, and losing the lounge is a deal breaker now. The Cochrane Curling would not have agreed to relocate to S L S without the lounge. It takes years to get infrastructure like this built. Years passed, construction began, cost overruns, management contractor changes contributed to the Cochrane Curling lounge being cut from the initial build. Many years went by, and still the Cochrane Curling had no lounge. It has been an uphill battle. S L S management and staff have worked very hard to make the On the Rocks Lounge the space you see today, a successful space. This is what the Cochrane Curling was promised when we agreed to move. This is what I was promised as a Cochrane Curling president at the time. This is what I agreed to, a place to socialize with your team, watch a game, have a birthday party, and yes, have a beverage. I don't think curling in Cochrane has been as good as is right now. Cochrane Curling's just returned from Italy, playing at the world level. Many others are competing at the highest levels as well. Working together with S L S curling manager and staff, we have developed programs for all ages to learn the game, meet new people, and grow the sport. The lounge is an integral part of this growth. The lounge is how Cochrane Curling fundraises to run our programs. Raffles, straws, et cetera, are run throughout the season during the curling events. The Cochrane Curling will lose this source of revenue. It will affect programs. It will impact S L S revenue. The fact that the elected leaders of this community would even consider making this change is outrageous. My, no consultation, no warning, just, oh, by the way, the Cochrane Curling will be losing a fundamental part of their sport, the lounge, and apologies. That's how it was understood.
Yes.
This change may be financially attracted to the Town of Cochrane, but it will devastate curling in Cochrane. You are in receipt of a letter from Cochrane Curling President Kendall Waiting dating May twenty-second, 2025. I urge you to act on it and reconsider any decision that would negatively impact the sport of curling in Cochrane. If you would like to discuss this further, please feel free to reach out and contact number and email.
Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, Mike. That's a scribble. E B Robinson.
All my questions have been answered.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you to all the citizens of Cochrane here tonight. I want to say, first of all, that I am here on my own. I'm not here representing any organization or any other people, and I hope that you will allow me to finish as it does come full circle to why we are here tonight. I'm here today not to raise concerns, but to highlight a deeply disturbing trend that has emerged in our town council over the years. Cochrane residents, everyday citizens, are being forced to form associations, organize fundraisers just to have a voice in the decisions that will profoundly affect their lives and our community. These are no small efforts. We're talking about people donating precious time, hundreds of thousands of dollars, not for amenities or community programs, but for lawyer fees and expert reports just to push back against decisions made without proper consultation or community support. Let me be clear, this is not a healthy democracy. This is damage control by the citizens after decisions are made behind closed doors. Take the Riverview Golf Course. Generations of Cochrane families have enjoyed the green space, and yet it was targeted for rezoning into multifamily housing, disregarding the long-term impact on recreation, the environment, and the surrounding community. The residents of Riverview fought back against Town Council, and I'm pleased to say they've won their battle in court after many years and many dollars. That's a victory for the community, but let's hope the new owners won't be quietly preparing another angle. That's happened before, because a fight should not have to continue just to protect something that we already have. Then there's the Heidelberg Materials Concrete Batch Plant, a proposal that defies common sense. The town or the town-directed committee granted a permit to spite serious concerns about light pollution, noise, dangerous levels of dust. Up to sixty, starting with sixty to eighty, concrete trucks a day, starting at 7:00 a.m. in the morning, six days a week, threatening road conditions, air quality, and traffic safety in town and on Highway twenty-two. But once again, the people spoke and fought, and thanks to their persistency and experience, the project has been pulled from the control of the committee or the council, whoever that is, and will now be reviewed by the Cochrane Town Planning Commission. The commission has committed to reviewing the concerns of all affected communities. Now that's a reprieve, and hopefully a better sign of judgment to come. But we had to fight to get there. It doesn't make sense. Then there's the Calgary Y M C's proposed takeover of the S L S Sports Center. Let's be clear, this is not a partnership. This is a full handover of control and takeover without any financial contribution from Y M C A. Once they have the contract, they'll do whatever they want, whenever they want, how they want, and to whomever they want. And as Mr. Durkot said on April twentieth, non-negotiable. And this lounge is not their, we've gone over this, lounge is not their model, curling rinks not curling-supported. We've been told they will review these possibilities, but only after the deal is done. You guys were asked to make a decision and vote. The proposal was on April twentieth. The vote was to be then or soon after by June second. This was way before the people that we had been heard from, that was before the contract could ever have been reviewed. That's when you were expected to do the contract. This is a... We don't need Calgary to hold our hands in Cochrane. The fact that Y M C A is here to make Cochrane a better place is absolutely gut-wrenching. We need Cochrane to maintain the sports center and solve any problems we have. Is it perfect? No. Can we solve the problems? There's geniuses here that have not been talked to. There is geniuses here. We can solve our own problems. These aren't isolated instances. This is a pattern, a pattern of council asking first and informing later, a pattern of ignoring public feedback, a pattern of pushing decisions that don't reflect the will of the community. And because of this pattern, Cochrane residents are being forced to fight their own elected representatives to be heard. That's not democracy. That's dysfunction. To the Town Council, to the Town Council, this is your moment to reflect. You were elected to represent us, not override us, not disregard us. We expect transparency, accountability, and public engagement before decisions are made, not after. And to my federal citizens, don't stop. You've already shown that we organize, we win. When we speak out, we get heard. This is our town, and it's worth defending. I want to, first of all, thank Counselor Nagel and Counselor Padeco for fighting on April twentieth to get us heard, to hear the town, to hear the citizens, to hear the facts, to hear what we've got to put in. Thank you, guys, very much. I understand it was a unanimous decision, but I'm not sure it was unanimously supported. Pretty sure it wasn't.
Mr. Teese, you're out of time.
Okay. I needed to say thank you, so I'll do that in my extra time. Thank you. Are there any questions?
No questions. I just feel like I need to... I want to clarify two things.
Sure.
Unrelated to tonight's discussions, but the concrete batch plant and the golf course were not led by council. Those were private enterprises coming forward that went through the process, not led by council.
Okay. The rezoning of the golf course was definitely compounded. You don't rezone just because you want to. You don't rezone green places without that.
We've got a question from Counselor Wilson.
I just had a comment, and I appreciate it, Don. Thank you for the presentation. Whatever the council was you were just describing there isn't something that I relate to or even know what we're talking about. My door is always open. I would love to have a coffee with you, talk about any of those topics anytime, and every councillor on the bench has the same attitude I do with that, so I just encourage you, please reach out on the Y M C A topic, which is what we're here to talk about, or any of the others.
Sure.
That's a very honest offer. I'd like to talk to you anytime.
And I know, and your history in town is to be very honest and forthright, so I appreciate that. Part of my comments, though, previous to today, on April twenty-seventh, at the Glen Eagles Community Association, councillor, not Mayor Janong, did a very emphatic sales presentation for the Y M C A. That was before the Town of Cochrane, not the council, the Town of Cochrane had been heard. There's been a lot of pre-deciding being done by council before today. Not yourself, I'm not saying, I'm not saying any names, but there has been. But thank you. And are you buying? Thank you.
I'm not here to argue with you, Mr. Teese, but I did not give a sales pitch.
I was there. Well, actually, Margaret Blair might be here too, the president of the Glen Eagles Community Association. I was there. I witnessed it, so I'm not guessing.
Let's agree to disagree, but I was not there for a sales pitch.
I'm not saying you were there to do that. I'm saying you did that. I'm not saying, I don't know why you were there.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. A lot of the same things are going to be said over and over again. I just want to point out one thing that's really important here, and that is the history of this facility was built by Cochranites families. And my family, we used this facility, so I am representing my family right now, and I really am against this right now. I think the facility needs to stay operational as it is now. It needs to stay with Cochranites making decisions, not somebody from Calgary making those decisions. So for me, it's very important for me to stand here and say that to you. I think you have a whole community saying the same thing, and because of that, I am going to suggest one more thing. We have an election coming up in October, municipal election. This is an important decision that's being made here. Let's hand it over as a plebiscite. Ask the whole community, do you want to do this? Do you want to move forward? And you know what? The information, you'll have lots of time to get that information out. There'll be a really good two-way conversation that's going to happen before that plebiscite. So I would suggest perhaps maybe that's the right community way to do this, instead of putting the onus just on this group of people here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Miles.
That's a tough act to follow. My name's Barb Gibson, and I have sat on the Curling Club's Board of Directors for over twenty-five years. I currently hold the position of Executive Secretary, League Coordinator for fifteen leagues, and Casino Chairman. I've been a member of the Cochrane Curling Club for thirty-five years, and I'm very passionate about the sport and especially this community. I'm going to try, I'm basically going to be flipping here because a lot of the things have been discussed, so I won't go over them, but so I'm going to start at the bottom, where I would have maybe closed with this, but does the Town of Cochrane and Rocky View County really need to go out and hire a third-party group from out of town to run this beautiful facility? Or do we just have to hire the right people to run what we already have in place? An example of that would be, let's hire a specialist that does nothing but write grants and go out and raise funds. That's what the Y M C A is pushing hard and saying that's what they do, because if you look at their balance sheets and their income statements, they actually are running at a loss, just like Kendall Waiting has told you, they are running at a loss, and they actually are showing a profit because they're putting their fundraising money at the bottom of the line. So that's how I was going to close, but I will go. So beside working for a living, I dedicated eight years of my life to getting the Cochrane Curling Club moved over to Spray Lakes. I was involved with C C C, winning the right to become part of this state-of-the-art facility, S L S, starting back in 2010. June seventh, 2012, we received a letter from the mayor's office advising us that the Town of Cochrane and Rocky View County fully supported a new curling facility to become part of S L S. From there, I was on a steering committee together with Ken Monroe and a lot of other stakeholders that were moving into the expansion, plus working with Stan Tech Engineering, who were the design team. The Curling Club's final plans included six sheets of ice, and they included many offices. I won't go into it because I don't want to use up my five minutes. Uh, but there was a lounge, and the lounge was there to, um, serve food and alcoholic beverages. In 2012 Rock the Waves was created, and I sat on that committee representing the Curling Club together with Ken Monroe and other club members to help raise ten million dollars that was covered, uh, that was not going to be covered by other, uh, forms of government. Our Curling Club members and other user groups from the aquatics and warm water therapy teams were tirelessly to help raise funds, not only by going out and trying to get corporate commitments for that, but also many of these people put in their own money from their own savings and everything else and helped raise funds in many other ways. The point I'm trying to make here by going over old history is the Curling Club is not just a user of space in this building that pays to rent ice and comes to curl six months of the year. The Cochrane Curling Club and its members helped build this facility and are very proud and passionate about the sport and of this beautiful facility that we call home. Not only did we help build it, we also donated a lot of furniture and equipment when we moved over from the old rink. Plus, over the years, we have applied for various grant money which allows SLS to buy new equipment. Over the last eight years, we've applied for and received over a hundred thousand dollars in grants and donations which were used to buy equipment for Spray Lakes to use in curling facility. And then that, that, those things become of the property of, of Spray Lakes. Kendall's gone over how we got there, so I'm not going to waste time doing that. But curling is a sport that players start at the age of seven, and we have two members who are in their nineties. A large majority of our members are fifty-plus. There is no other sport that gives people in their senior years the opportunity to come out and get a lot of exercise that helps them stay healthy, be part of an organized sport that is recognized worldwide, plus have time to socialize in a great environment in the, on the Rocks Lounge with other people, both young and old. It gets them out of their, of their apartments or wherever they might be. If, if on the Rocks, if YMCA has granted a two-contract to operate this facility and they close on the Rocks Lounge, where are these wonderful people going to go? They will have no alternative for them in our town to continue in a sport that many of them have been involved in since they were kids. The Cochrane Curling Club has a great working relationship with the SLS team that is responsible for the ice shed, the lounge and all things curling. Because the making of curling ice is so specialized, it is imperative that the SLS team be retained so we can continue to provide ice in a facility that is the envy of many clubs in Cochrane to compete in events. This lounge is not a bar, Kendall's mentioned that, other people have mentioned that. People come there with their kids. This is a place where people come. And when we ran it and we were trying to do it as volunteer, it, it's impossible. And when we had our meeting with the mayor and with Mr. Derikott and, and the YMCA last Friday, they said that they would not run this themselves. But if they take over Spray Lakes, the people that work there are going to be their employees. And the employees of SLS are running this right now, and they're running it extremely well. Plus, the town of Cochrane's put well over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. They had initially given them a hundred and twenty-five thousand to get it started after we stepped aside, and they've spent more than that. So are you saying that you're going to let an out-of-town group go in there, dismantle this, maybe a hundred, two-hundred thousand that you've spent to open it for, because they don't want to serve alcohol? I mean, these people are having a glass of wine and a beer. They're not going there to get drunk. So that's all I have to say. I guess in closing, I'm just asking the town in Rocky View County, if you go forward with the YMCA, it's imperative that they redo this agreement so that the On the Rocks Lounge is kept open and running in at least its current form for the term of the agreement. And if the YMCA says that is unacceptable, then I don't think any agreement should be signed at all. I think we need to relook at this and come back with a better plan. Thank you.
Thanks. Barb, before you leave... Oh, Councillor Wilson, you have a question, and Barb, you're, you're representing the next speaker?
Yes.
So I would just say you stay, stay out there, please.
Okay.
Just a quick question, Barb. Could you elaborate on the hundred and twenty-five to two-hundred thousand you spoke of, uh, on the Rocks Lounge received from the town? What, what do you know was done with that and just what situation that's left the lounge?
Well, so, uh, when we moved over there, as Kendall mentioned in his, uh, presentation, uh, they ran out of money. And so there was no infrastructure put in there, so they couldn't even lease it out to a third-party. There was no, uh, there was no water, there was no, there was nothing. It was a shell. That's all. It was sitting there was a shell. And so, uh, I believe it was in about twenty, twenty, twenty-twelve, the town, um, put forward a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that would be used to put in some infrastructure into the space so that they could attract a third-party tenant. And, um, it wasn't utilized the first couple of years that you guys put it aside, but I believe that Spray Lakes has used it to, uh, put in a proper bar, put in, um, TVs. They actually had put in a whole new thing in their backend where, for proper, uh, for water. So I think it was spent to, the, the hundred and twenty-five initially was spent to help improve it and get it to where it is today, but I know they spent more than that.
Okay. Yep. Thank you. It's, uh, it's mostly news to me, which means it's probably mostly news to a lot of people. And the obvious fear would be that if the YMCA was to come in and there wasn't a operator for that space, that investment would go, uh...
Well, the thing is, it's being operated very well now by the staff. And if that staff is retained by the Y, is the Y going to tell that staff they can no longer do that because they don't serve liquor?
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I don't see any other questions for you, but you are now representing Mr. Bob Head.
Yeah, so, yes.
I just ask if you have written consent from him to...
I have written consent from him, and I offered it to the lady at the front.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, so I would dislike a little bit to say a little bit about Mr. Bob Head. Bob Head is the second oldest curler in our curling club. He just turned ninety years old, and we had a big birthday party for him up in the Rock, on the Rocks Lounge. And everybody had a nice glass of wine. Everybody enjoyed it. But Bob Head is, um, he's just, we've got one other member who's older than him. She's ninety-two years old, and they still curl three or four times a week. It's a really important thing for them to do. So all I'm going to do is just read you what Mr. Head, uh, wrote, and he wanted you to hear this. So this is from Bob. "Please take a few moments from your busy lives to give some serious consideration to the proposal before our communities. While I'm particularly directing your attention to the Spray Lakes Curling Facility Lounge, it's quite obvious from recent community objection that other entities are equally concerned. I just happen to be the oldest regular curler in both the senior mix and senior men's leagues. While this most assuredly does not mean any special consideration, my career has allowed me involvement in curling clubs in four provinces. Once a competitive curler, my four games weekly plus bond spiels is now primarily for social and personal health. It is in this vein that I take exception to the proposal being advanced by the YMCA. One gets the impression that the YMCA are of the opinion that allowing a lounge to be supported by any form of liquor, beer sale or consumption places a dark cloud over participants. One can only assume that this prohibition was the original mandate of a YMCA charter. That was a time when bars were hidden, when women were prohibited from voting, and were relegated to subservient positions in our society. Times change in society. It's high time for the YMCA to update. How many curling club facilities has that organization managed? The Curling Club Lounge is an integral segment of the Curling Melu. Far from being a drinking bar, it is a place where curlers meet and greet. Yes, some will have a drink, but many, many will simply have coffee, socialize and watch games from above. Our drinking-driving laws have become so clear that bartenders too are too careful in their serving, are also too careful in their serving. I've seen absolutely no evidence of over-indulgence, and I did spend a lifetime in law enforcement. And just so, if you wonder what it was, he was thirty-eight years in the RCMP, and he retired as second-in-command to the commissioner. So he was like one from the top. So he knows what he's saying. The YMCA agreement, if, if proceeds as proposed, will doubtlessly see a drop in curly persis, curling participation in both regular and senior leagues. Bond spiel entries will be reduced, which in my opinion will mean that many seniors will retire from a fitness, social lifestyle that is so necessary for overall health. With continuing physical activity by seniors, healthcare costs trends downward. Curling is one activity that is significant. If the YMCA are successful in securing a lease from Spray Lakes, my only hope is that this lease does not include our lounge being removed. Please consider all the negative aspects of the lease proposal and deny the application as it is proposed. Robert Head, Cochrane."
Okay. We can't really ask Bob any questions. Thank you for representing him. Uh, Lark Ballmer? You're representing Ms. Ballmer?
No, I'm Lark. No, you're right. No, I, I...
Oh, he did. I didn't, I didn't realize I was speaking. I just, uh, I just sent the, I sent the letter to all of you, so I think you've already received it. I don't think, I think I'm repeating things that everyone's already said.
Okay.
So I thank you for having the public hearing and listening to us.
Thank you.
It's really good.
Yeah.
Give it to me.
You had me for a minute, Don. Uh, Jeff Crantilla?
Good evening, councillors and mayor. Uh, my name is Jeff Crantilla. I'm a resident of Cochrane and the treasurer of the Cochrane Curling Club. Uh, I've been around curling since I was about eight, so a long time. I'm not going to go further than that. Uh, I'll try to not repeat most of the things that have already been said this evening, so if my presentation sounds a little disjointed, my apologies. Uh, I do understand the town is looking for a more cost-efficient method of running the SLSC and future plan, uh, to implement a new facility. Do need funds to, uh, bring this to fruition. Uh, unfortunately, there are too many unanswered questions with the awarding of the RFP to the YMCA in its current state. Around user agreements, um, we understand that currently there are only one-year tenant agreements in place. Uh, however, the unique relationship between the SLSC and the Cochrane Curling Club Board greatly assists in the longevity cover, uh, longevity comfort, uh, that we receive in this regard. Uh, there is nothing in the agreement protecting investment time and money in the facility. I'll speak to that a little later. Uh, as was mentioned before, there's lots of uncertainty around sports-related environments like the lounge space. Uh, every curling facility I've ever, ever played at has had a lounge space. Uh, it's invaluable for competitive coaching and strategy discussions and observations. Uh, it promotes the social aspect to current and potential new curling members. Uh, before the lounge was in its current state, the facility lost significant food and beverage revenue at bond spiels and evenings post-game due to participants leaving for external social revenue. Uh, we use this place as a fundraising venue, so we hold, as was mentioned, fifty-fifty draws and silent auction. Uh, and they draw a significant amount of, of revenue. We historically have used these proceeds to subsidize juniors and teenagers programs within our organization. Uh, the improvements to the lounge have contributed to larger bond spiels. Um, these bond spiels bring thirty-plus players traveling to Cochrane for, from out of town for a long weekend. Uh, in turn, this contributes to the local economy and spin-off revenues. Uh, as a treasurer, I can speak to the actual facility numbers. Uh, the participant revenues grew approximately fifteen thousand dollars since the twenty-two, twenty-three season. Uh, improved lounge space has also contributed to new leagues and increased membership. Again, as treasurer, I can speak to the actual numbers. We have a ladies' day league that now brings in thirteen thousand dollars of new revenue, a development league, another eight thousand. Uh, and these figures are only for the last season. So this is brand-new revenue that improvements to the lounge have directly contributed to. The overall revenue increases, and I believe the lounge played a significant role in this, as well as the improvements in the, uh, ice condition and the staff that run our facility is approximately a hundred thousand dollars, again, difference between twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three season and twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, our club continues to grow year over year with our junior and novice programs leading the way. We had sixty-plus junior participants this year. Uh, we have thirty new novice participants, and both of these groups feed into new full-time memberships and revenues. Uh, now, this is a fear, not a fact, but to me, it's a pretty well-grounded fear. Uh, and this is the progression as I see it. No lounge space or modified lounge space and Y membership fee requirements will cap or reduce participants. This translates to lower bond spiel and club league utilization. Hockey would use a far larger percentage of ice time if curling time uses decreases, and the Y would then convert curling ice into hockey ice to increase revenues to meet its goals. And this would almost certainly become a necessity to meet its profit promises to the town. As alluded to above, how will Cochrane Curling Club's money and time contributions be protected in this regard? The YMCA repeatedly states that no operational changes are planned, but if that is the case, what is the financial rationale for the forecast profits? And if that is the case, why not put guarantees into the contract explicitly? Curling has been referred to as the warmest winter sport, primarily because it's a social game first and foremost. A lounge space is an absolute necessity. There needs to be language in the agreement around this before signing, not after. The sport is inclusive of almost every demographic, men, women, multi-gender, uh, young. As our, uh, been said before, our youngest member is six, our oldest member is ninety-two. Uh, we do have wheelchair athletes, and, uh, one of our members, Terry Fowler, has recently brought us the banner from Curling Alberta. We are the reigning champions in the wheelchair competition. The current agreement does not enshrine any of this stability, but it needs to. Beyond YMCA's warm words of continuing discussions, uh, there are just un, they're just unwritten and unforcible. YMCA promises of consultations with user groups after the contract is signed is senseless, and I believe it would be irresponsible to sign an agreement under these terms. Cochrane and the Cochrane Curling Club has a long history providing and promoting this sport to its citizens. And finally, on a personal note, we put our trust in our council to look to the future, but we also trust our council to curate our history. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Councillor Wilson has a question?
Just one question, Jeff. Uh, the same essential question I asked your president, Kendall, and that's simply that if there was a transfer in ownership, can you imagine the viability of the lounge? You already said no lounge affects the financial viability of the Cochrane Curling Club. Can you imagine any other party running that lounge? For instance, a volunteer group, your group, the Cochrane Curling Club, or a third-party? I thought you might have a unique perspective on that. And I, I guess I'll also coach it and just say that whenever I've been around the province, the different curling clubs, there always is a lounge. Um, do you have any ideas? Is that usually operated by the club itself? Or is that a third-party operating those often?
I believe it's a mix. Uh, so currently, uh, other curling clubs do run their own lounge and their own facility. And at times, uh, when they, like us, don't have the capacity to do that, they will subcontract that to someone else to provide the service.
Okay. And then just the first question about can you foresee a volunteer group yourselves or a third-party operating in this context in our, in our current situation?
Again, uh, as Kendall said, I, I don't think we have the capacity as curling club to run the bar. We did run it in the past. Uh, it was quite arduous and a lot of work. Uh, I don't think we have the capacity to continue in that. A third-party, again, despite what was presented here tonight, the initial information, and I haven't heard anything to, uh, counter this information, is that no third-party would be, uh, invited to run, uh, a licensed facility in the lounge space.
Okay. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
So also a question from Councillor Fedeko?
Uh, as I asked Kendall before, is there a certain type of amendment that you would like to see written into the contract that would perhaps make you feel a bit more confident or confidence in the proposal itself?
Uh, well, first I would say, uh, the non-negotiability of having a lounge in its current form. So, uh, keeping the lounge in its current function, including licensed facility. Um, I, I honestly think that user group, uh, consultations with, uh, council would help, uh, illuminate anything that needs to be included in the contract as either non-negotiables or like-to-haves or, uh, things that would greatly benefit the facility in the future.
Perfect. Thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
Uh, Rick Urban?
You took the long way.
I wondered why, I wondered why Kendall went that way instead of... Anyway, um, thank you for, uh, the time this evening. It's been a long time since I've been in front of this esteemed group to, uh, talk about the sports center. So, um, to introduce myself for those who don't know who I am, I, uh, was the first chairman of the, uh, the Spray Lakes Recreational Park Society. I was, uh, along with Bruce Kendall and Larry Shelley, very privileged to be, um, the, the, I guess, the original construction crew that, uh, worked with the town and the county on, uh, actually building the facility. Name, names of the park and the totem one came, um, about because of, uh, two other community-minded benefactors, Barry Molesness from Spray Lakes Song Hills... community-minded benefactors, Barry Molesness from Spray Lakes Songills and Jim Thurograd, who's no longer with us. Uh, without their financial and moral support, I'm sure the center wouldn't have gotten off the ground as quickly as it did. The community itself committed to help fundraise for the center, including, uh, many of the user groups here, such as Cochrane Minor Hockey, uh, and they played key roles in getting that done. Uh, my goal when building it was to, uh, make it a place that, uh, if you wanted to find somebody in Cochrane, you'd look there first. And I think, uh, I smile every time I walk in there now because I think we just about did that. I have some questions and concerns. Uh, I've not seen, uh, what the YMCA proposes to charge for running the facility. They're suggesting that the center will immediately run at a profit and that they will grow that profit to one point eight four million dollars by year five, but no detail on how that will be accomplished. There's a lot of information needed in that area, keeping in mind that the existing board, uh, cost is zero, um, al, along with, uh, Councillor Nagel's comments. There is no free lunch, so somewhere, somewhere, the Y is gonna be making some money on that. They don't donate their time. The Y prides, YMCA of Calgary, prides itself on volunteer involvement, which we already have in significant, uh, proportion here in Cochrane. The two councils need to remember that until the aquatic center and curling rink were added to the facility, there had been no need to have either government costs, uh, cover operational costs. The, so, when we created the society, the society, uh, we originally created it with the pricing structure that all these segments, i.e. user groups, gym, et cetera, would support their own operating costs and wouldn't be allowed into the facility unless they could show us they did that. Um, uh, we believe, or I know, uh, from, it's fairly common knowledge, that swimming pools sim, simply cannot charge enough user fees to cover their costs, thereby becoming a liability for the municipality. So the one point two million, I think, operating costs, uh, wouldn't go away with the Y taking over. The, the old, the old Cochrane Arena, or, sorry, the old Cochrane Pool was rumored to have cost the town in excess of five hundred thousand dollars annually. I've heard even more number than that. Uh, one would assume that several of the center's staff would be dismissed, a financial blow to the center. Uh, you don't just kick them out the door and not have to pay, and, and, and also a moral, uh, a moral blow to the rest of the staff in the facility. YMCA of Calgary had to choose, had to close its own facility in Eau Claire several years back because it couldn't make it work financially. Uh, not a perfect record on their behalf. Um, in discussion with, uh, Rocky View County Reeve Crystal, uh, Reeve Crystal Kissel, she brought up that the society board had trouble finding people to fill vacancies. I would ask, um, the, and show, I think, that there's a group here that would put their hands up in a minute to, uh, to show that they would be in, uh, enjoy working on that committee. Uh, the center has, is an envy of many communities. Let's keep it that way and keep it local. Uh, another point, they are not gonna run the original arena, the Cochrane Arena. That's, that's gonna create a, an administrative problem. Who's, who's gonna take over running that? Uh, how are you gonna schedule ice time? Uh, it's not, it's not coherent in, in my mind. Um, and I think that, uh, I, I believe that, uh, I'm, I'm glad that you've taken the time to have this public hearing because I think it's critical that, um, the needs be approached with, um, why, eyes wide open and all the cards on the table so that people can really understand what's going on. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Uh, um, before you leave the podium, thank you for being a founding father of, uh, this facility.
It's my baby.
That's the word you were looking for.
It is my baby. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Dana Cislak? Cislick?
Yes, I'd just like to thank everybody for the opportunity to be able to be a part of this process and to hear everybody out. Um, all my answers and, and concerns have basically been answered, and, uh, it's a privilege to be here this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. So for those of you that didn't hear that, Dana is thanking us for the opportunity and doesn't wish to speak is what I'm taking for... I can't see you back there. Yep. Okay, thank you. Uh, Diana Meyer?
Uh, thank you all for my concerns and your questions.
Okay, thank you, Diana. Same, same, same.
Hello, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I never thought I'd get up to bat. But, um, a couple of questions before I start. Do I, am I correct in assuming that Rocky View County is a fifty percent share in, in the sports facility?
I can answer that for you. Yes, we are fifty-fifty owners.
Okay. Um, were they invited here this evening? A representative?
Anyone is up, has the opportunity to speak at, at a public hearing.
No, but was, was a representative from Rocky View invited here to participate in any way?
No, they have their own decision-making process separate from ours.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I just may add to that, um, Rocky View County is certainly aware of this event, um, happening tonight, and, um, likely, I would say, even though they're not here, are likely observing.
Okay. And, and was there a representative from the management of the Sports Center here tonight as well?
I can't answer that question. I don't, there's a whole bunch more speakers left to come. I'm not sure.
There, there may be, but the, it, my, I wanted to make two comments, and one is about process and the other is about communications. And, and as far as I know, the, the negotiations have been going on for, I think, the original idea was almost a year ago. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the, 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 the level of communications from the council, the town, to the residents, I think, has been incredibly poor. Uh, so now here we are at the eleventh hour, and you've got a bunch of people who are, who are so passionate and are afraid that the wrong decision will be made. Um, that's item one. Item two, um, the level of communications within the sports complex to the employees of the sports complex. I think the management of the sports complex have done an abysmal job of letting the employees know what really is going on. I think many of them are afraid for their jobs. They really don't, didn't know for many months what was actually being discussed, and, uh, it, it's just, I don't think it's the right way for management to work. So my issue is about process, which I think has been flawed, and communications, I think, which has been just abysmal.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Pat Comer and Mike Born? Rick, are you... It says Rick Urban beside it. Founding father of...
I did a blog.
Yeah. And you have written permission from the...
I, I have it by email, saying that it was fair to share their comments. I'll just read them very quickly. Um, uh, to balance the, uh, interests of town of Cochrane, Rocky View County, and user groups, the board was set up so that, uh, the board, being the Spray Lakes, uh, society, uh, that no one entity would control the board. Uh, the fact that the mayor of Cochrane and Rocky View County, Reeve, are now in critical positions on the Sports Center Board points to a potential desire to control or wield undue influence over the board. The perception is not positive. User groups and general population need to maintain some degree of control on the board. Major changes in governance need to be completely discussed with the populace, especially including all the user groups as well as major funding contributors. Is the current organization broken? It was always a user-pay method and worked well. However, adding on the pool changed that model. As we all know, pools must be subsidized, as no user group can afford to pay the true cost of such a facility. In my mind, I think it's a buck a gallon in the pool. Um, the, uh, public outlining of operational costs, costs, or problems, costs, and future expectation would be helpful to some of us concerned citizens who were initially very involved in fundraising and building during the first stages of the project, but now are out of the loop. Will the YMCA maintain current programs? Will they apply their own priorities, objectives, as opposed to desires of other user groups? What do they bring to the table? Um, overall, we can't express our opinions fully because we don't feel that we have enough facts about the situation, and they look forward to learning more about that. And they're away until the end of June, so that's why I'm doing this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bruce Kendall, and you can't believe how disappointed I am to be here tonight to find out that the next railroad coming through Cochrane won't be the Banff-Calgary link. Instead, I understand that the rails are laid and the train is left to station in Calgary for the YMCA to come here to Cochrane, and I'm deeply disappointed. In two thousand, we put the shovel on the ground. Cochrane Minor Hockey had purchased the land for one point one million and sixty thousand dollars, and I'm very disappointed in myself for believing at that point in time it was prudent to put the land and the title of Cochrane and Rocky View Counties, because we were worried that a user group would screw it up. But no, it looks like the elected officials in two municipalities that each share title to the property are the ones that are gonna mess it up. This is a facility for the community, and the community isn't just Cochrane. The community is Rocky View residents and Cochrane residents. People don't discriminate amongst themselves when they're there. They manage the facility. You've got CFOs on that board of two major corporations, one, I guess, is retired. Um, I've heard that the board doesn't have the depth to run it. Well, maybe we should look at two others that we have on that board, which are both politicians, because it seems that they have an agenda that is moving towards the YMCA. And I don't have anything against the YMCA, but every time I talk to someone or read something, the story is different. On Wednesday of last week, Mayor Janong and I had a conversation. He said, "Well, it's not about the money. We've got all these projects that we gotta plan for the future." And I said, "Fine, plan for them for the future." Spray Lakes facility has room for maybe one more facility there. You could maybe put a library or a small performing arts or something there. You might squeeze something like that in. It's full. It's run at capacity. It's run by a great group that, as you've heard, ninety-two percent recovery rate with a pool. That facility made money until the town put the pool on the site. So the problem is not what was there in phases one, two, and three. It's something that was created by the town. The town's population has grown since two thousand and one, February, when we opened it. It's, uh, probably well over forty thousand now, is my guess, given all the housing starts you've seen. Rocky View County's population on this west side, pretty much north of the river, it's changed too. But I think it was probably around five or six thousand back then, and it probably might be close to ten. So, uh, it's doubled. You guys have tripled. If it's a, if it's a money issue, tell the board. But if you have another operator in, that's gonna give you all of this extra cash, it's coming as a tax increase through the back door to all the residents of the city of Cochrane. Because if I calculate right, a million two is about thirty thousand dollars, or, sorry, thirty dollars per person in, in, in Cochrane. There's not much you can do to improve the performance there except raise the prices. You could, I suppose, replace some paid staff with volunteers if people wanted to volunteer. If you've got problems with your phase, uh, two project, or whatever you wanna call it over here off Horse Creek Road, get your user groups involved. It was the user groups that drove Spray Lakes to what it is today. Um, it was the user groups that showed up on the construction site when I needed them in two thousand, two thousand and one to get jobs done. It's the user groups who put forward the volunteers for just about every activity that goes on down there. And I think it's an affront to the residents in this community that you are considering taking out those jobs and moving them to Calgary, for what I can see is no financial gain. I haven't seen any projects in Calgary that have been driven and constructed by the Y. The Y comes in and takes over management lots of city facilities. Saw them at South Fish Creek when I went there and did their rink expansion. You'd think it was the Y's rink if you read their website, but far as I know, it's still South Fish Creek Rec Society, which is thirteen community associations, and it's the most successful community-run rink probably in the province. The Y is not the answer. The community is the answer. It should be for the people, by the people, and if they don't get to keep their facility and the programs that they're used to, then I suspect in the fall, they should vote with their hearts, because I haven't talked to anyone who is in favor of a change in management. If there's a problem with management, address it, but I keep hearing they're doing a good job. They're doing a great job. They've got ninety-two percent recovery. What do you want them to do? If you want them to up the fees, as a board, you can tell them, yeah, double the fees.
Mr. Kendall, your, your time's up if you wanna wrap up, please.
Okay, well, um, I urge you to get off this train and leave it with the community that built it, loves it, and wants it to remain the same. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thanks. See some people. Pat and Bill Icton? Going once? Okay.
Good evening, Town Council, and everybody that's still here, uh, in this sort of marathon evening. Uh, I am the current president of the Cochrane Masters Swim Club, uh, and I'm representing Cochrane Masters Swim Club. We are a volunteer nonprofit society currently operating out of the Spray Lakes facility in the pool. Um, I have a couple of sort of concerns more to bring up and, uh, maybe a couple of comments. Uh, one of the things that I think was tabled earlier, as there was mention of honoring is existing agreements. Our agreements are annual in nature, which means that, uh, at the end of the six months and maybe a year, uh, they would be open to be changing. Uh, one of the reasons why I'm here tonight is that we haven't heard or seen any clear policy or agreement regarding exactly how or how long, preferably indefinitely, that the YMCA will support or include clubs like the Cochrane Masters Swim Club. Um, you know, and then one of the questions that somebody asked me to table is, you know, there are swim banners from the Ninjas, Comets, Piranhas, et cetera, and so forth that are currently in the pool. Will something like that remain? It doesn't need to be answered here, but that was something that I was asked to, to put in. One of our concerns as a swim club within, uh, Spray Lakes is during the water shortage in Calgary, there were a flood of Caney Calgary swimmers that came to Spray Lakes to seek refuge because the pools were closed. Um, and so one of the concerns that was raised is with this overlapping membership between Calgary and Cochrane, will we then see a flood of people coming from Calgary that have existing memberships that will increase the usage of our facility without revenue going to our facility that are YMCA members? Something to note. Uh, I think one of the things that I would say as far as Spray Lakes, kind of echoing what people have said, is that I, I do see it as part of the Cochrane community, its identity, and it's a place to meet. It's kind of a quirky place, and I think it represents the quirky mosaic that is Cochrane. I think what's being tabled here is kind of like asking McDonald's to run Sunnyside and asking them to promis- and asking them to promise to keep the Sunnyside the way it is based on Purple Promises, which I think is hard to do. The YMCA has a business model that is well-known, that works, and the quirky nature of the Cochrane facility is very, very different from that. I think I'll end on this, but one of my things, I don't really have any vested interest in the lounge whatsoever, but as far as a lounge inside of a facility like this, I've never seen a facility this handcuffed and what they could offer that seems to really limit its ability to act more of a community hub. Just a note. That's all I have, if there's any questions.
Looks like there's one. Thank you. Counselor Fedeko.
Just as I ask the other groups, is there a certain amendment that you would like to see written into the contract? Is it to protect certain user groups? Is there anything that you would like to add?
I think it would protect what we currently have. I do deal with contracts like this. I'd love to see this contract personally. But it's one of those things where I can say, yeah, the Cochrane Masters Swim Club would like to have, you know, service as it currently exists in perpetuity, but there's ways around that that can come about with a sophisticated corporation. So I don't know that there's an amendment, but I think larger to that, I kind of look at it and I go, you know, as a businessperson, I haven't seen a business case presented here that really sways me to think that what YMCA is offering the town of Cochrane is vastly superior and worth what they're, you know, the juice is not worth the squeeze from what I've seen so far. And I would encourage the town of Cochrane that an in-house solution, you know, you can hire people from the YMCA to run our facility. You don't have to hire the YMCA. You can hire professionals that do this day in and day out to amp up for growth for the new facilities up on the hill. So I don't know that there's something that would give me the satisfaction, but I can't find a policy with anything from I've seen from YMCA of how they work with user groups, like many of the ones that currently operate out of the town of Cochrane.
Thank you for your opinion.
Yeah.
Counselor Nagel.
I have a question for administration arising from the comments. When will the proposed contract be made public for the public to review?
I think we can, well, Mr. Derek, I'll have your willing to answer now, or we can have that at the end.
Yeah, I can comment on that when I return, but I'll appreciate making a comment on that question. Thank you.
Note that for later? Yeah. Thank you. Linda Smith. Linda Smith. Dan Ferguson. Coming from outside? Yep.
I'd like to thank the mayor and council for the opportunity to present. Forgive my cough. My wife and I moved to Cochrane in 2021 and have very much enjoyed the community and the excellent recreational facilities for us seniors, but also for our children and grandchildren. We have consistently been impressed with the Curling Club facility, but more important, been impressed with the dedicated staff who operate the curling facility and the executive who manage the club and make the program run so well. Over the years, we have resided in several communities in south-central Alberta, and bar none, the Cochrane Curling Club has been far and away the best curling operation we have had the privilege of joining. I worry about the viability of the Cochrane Curling Club under the proposed YMCA model. The elimination of the On the Rocks Lounge as we know it would threaten an integral part of the sports community, lead to a loss of the club's primary fundraising venue, but also lead to a loss of crucial meeting place for all user groups, all of which support local businesses. I know personally that if the YMCA closes the On the Rocks Lounge, implements the new member user fee and/or increases the user rental facility fees, our curling league fees will increase significantly, and we will be forced to look at Calgary or perhaps Springbank and support their curling facilities going forward. I'm certain a significant number of seniors will do likewise. I urge the Town Council to reconsider and pause any decisions that will lead to the transfer of the operations of the Spray Lakes Sawmill Centre to the YMCA until binding guarantees are provided that maintain all existing services, including the On the Rocks Lounge. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Dan Koonen. Coming from outside. Give you a second.
Okay, I will start by saying I want to thank everybody that I see that has come this opportunity, but everybody that I've seen come here. A lot is left, but I think the message should be very clear to this council that there's a lot of concerns. Now, a lot of people have said a lot of things that I would probably replicate and ask myself, but really, there's been a lot of questions asked and some good answers questions. Thank you, Mr. Nagel, for some actual questions, as well as Ms. Fedeko as well, sorry, Counselor Fedeko as well. I had a whole list of things that I've done and crossed out, and so I'll kind of make it short here with a little bit. There is a couple of questions I still want, but I will start off, it's a little bit with just, because I already see that I've already broken a minute. The bottom line is, I've seen the SLS Centre literally from when it was a thought in someone's mind to it being built. There was a lot of problems as it was being built, but you know, those problems weren't because of the community or the way it was run. Actually, quite honestly, it was because that became political and that became oversight by council. That has cost millions of dollars of operation repairs that should last twenty years, for example, that no one bothered to pay attention to, et cetera, et cetera. But the bottom line, as much as I've been critical of SLS at this point, we now have a community that's built to come dependent on this, the way it's run and what it provides to the community. And the one thing that I've given up, most of my questions, most, there's a couple more, but I'll be honest with you, I'm more confused than anything else. The only thing that's very clear to me is that some members in council and administration have drank the Kool-Aid, and I fear for their lack of impartiality, quite honestly, because I don't believe we're heading into a very important discussion. And you've heard from everybody that no consultation has taken place at this point. Not from, there's user groups that are not mentioned, there's situations, like I know one group that is literally, rather than coming to the town to ask for some operating expenditures, is funding themselves just by being allowed to use the Cochrane Rec Centre. And that could be lost. There is so much work, I think the only reasonable solution at this point for council to do is to go back to the drawing board, start the consultation here, do not come here. This, I've been a little bit concerned with some council members and administration, and the literature, that's more sales pitch than it is asking questions. And that's not what council should be about. You've kind of brought this on yourselves, now fix the process, go back from the start. And that's what people are asking for. And the two questions I have before I kind of get kicked out here is, one thing that's very clear to me is that Rocky View is a partner. Even if we have a six-month window where we can say, Cochrane can say, the council can say, we want out or we want to change things, I have not heard a definitive. I've heard a lot of jargon and a lot of walk-around, but I have not heard a definitive sort of, can Cochrane itself make a decision to get out of a deal that it signed? Or does Rocky View also have to come along? So this salesmanship of Cochrane making an autonomous decision, in fact, might be complete salesmanship, not reality. I haven't heard a yes/no answer for that. The other thing is, I'm really concerned about a lot of, you know, this has been talked about as a way to come forward and get public consultation, but very clear that a proposal's already been essentially accepted. We're only tweaking it, and that's the only consideration being given at this point, not whether you made the right choice in the first place. I know of nothing that would stop council from turning around and asking, for example, YWCA or the other groups that were, have now apparently been kicked out, their ability to turn around and say, this is what we offer. That hasn't been presented to the public. The last question I hear in the last dying seconds would be, where could I myself or anybody else in the community get, for lack of a better word, get confirmation as who's talked to who about what? Because again, this has come out of, essentially, we've got a break-shiny deal, and now you guys are in damage control for a situation that you've largely created because you haven't talked to the community in the first place. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Don't see any questions. Carrie Monahan? Moynihan?
Good evening, members of council. My name's Carrie Moynihan. I'm a voting member of the town's Parks and Recreation Committee, and I've moved here to Cochrane five years ago from Calgary. I have a forty-year career in senior sports management in Canada. I've been the CEO of Alpine Canada Gymnastics, Canoeing, Shooting, and Cycling. I've managed two Canada Games. I've been in charge of University Sport in Canada, so I believe I bring a lot of expertise to this whole issue. My questions are around the management structure. First of all, I'd like to know about the new management structure of the proposed organization. Are there members of the YMCA here tonight? I'd like to see them eyeball to eyeball. Are they here? No. I would like to know if the new management structure comes in, how it will be the same or different with the existing structure, which I believe works very well. I'd like to know if the new management structure comes in, which staffer will be replaced and why? And I want to know the accountability back to the citizens of Cochrane should the new Y become involved. Those are my points. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you, Carrie. We have one. Counselor Fedeko.
I have actually a question for administration. Was the YMCA representative invited to come to this meeting tonight, perhaps to answer any questions, just like when applicants come to kind of give their side of the story as well?
This isn't, they are not the applicant. The town is actually acting as the applicant tonight, but I understand your question.
That's fine, but yeah, I was just wondering if they were invited.
I think, again, I'd be happy to speak to that when I return to the podium, if you want to note that question.
Thanks, Mr. Derek.
Any other questions? I just think it was important, when you're dealing with a new entity, to look at them eyeball to eyeball. But I don't see anyone here.
Got you.
Thank you.
This person is in the overflow room. I'm having trouble reading this. Horn is the last name? Beth? Thank you, yes. Beth? It does look like Beth now that I've heard it.
Yeah, sorry. I have a little thing. Thank you, Beth. Hi, everybody. Yes, I'm Beth Horn. I'm here as an individual of the community. Thank you to the councillors and to the mayor for opening up this public hearing for us and also for your obvious desire to hear from us. That's very much appreciated. You, Beth, sorry, is that better? Okay, I'll just move a little thing. Okay, so I obviously, I sent a letter to all of you yesterday, and I'm not going to read it, because I'm hoping you all had a chance to read it, but it had a lot of great points, and some of them have already been discussed here as well. But I'm going to try and put those thoughts into a nutshell. Obviously, having written a three-page concern letter shows that it's hard for me to put detail into small amounts, but I'm going to try. The other benefit is everybody here's already been saying a lot of the points, so I'll cut out some of that. First of all, my concern with the YMCA in particular is because, yes, they have great efficiencies, they run supermodels, they have proven their time, and they're tweaked their programs, but that's just it. It's their programs. That's why they get the economies of scale, because they run the same programs in every facility they run, to my understanding. The difference with Cochrane here is we have such a unique, diverse use that everybody is using with what all the community and user groups have created that YMCA has not dealt with before. So I find it really hard to understand how we're going to see 1.2 million in savings annually in costs that are going to be outside of what their normal stream is to manage anyhow. So like, I mean, I'd love to see that number come, obviously, we all would. But again, with the pool being part of those costs, a big portion of the costs of the operating that aren't covered by users, that's not going to change. So I really want to question and know that there's really proven information here that we'll be getting. Also, the old adage, if it sounds too good to be true, it usually is. Cochrane, sorry, the YMCA, to my understanding, works for the community, yes, definitely, very high in youth programs, very high in inclusive programs, underprivileged programs, you name it. That's what they're there for. Make sure everybody can get their needs met. Cochrane here, we've developed something that is, does that already with our programs and our service for underprivileged people and for wheelchair accessibility, you name it, right, youth, seniors. So I don't see how they're going to be able to take the unique parts of what we've also built with that foundation and the competitive side, which the YMCA typically does not handle. Very hard for swim clubs, my understanding, to get time in the pool at Y, right? That's part of our foundations here. So, sorry, try to keep moving on faster here. So I'm really curious, though, how are they going to get those gains of the 1.2 million if they're not cutting staff, cutting programs? I'd like to see the proof in that, so I can analyze it a little bit better, and I think we all would. And then the annual budget, yes, definitely, they can approve it. You council can approve it every year. What's going to stop a management company such as the Y making changes in programming throughout the year? All of a sudden, they're going to be managing, they're going to come up against something, they're going to see something needs to change. How are we going to ensure, without a written contract, for specific needs that Cochrane's town and community and Rocky View County need in the written agreement, right? I'll have an answer for your question that you've been asking on the kitchen, but I'll save that for later. The lounge, okay, sorry. What, so basically, what's the economic cost really going to be to us, to Cochrane, right? Because I see lost jobs, I see lost programming, I see lost access. One of the reasons I understand the Y is wanting to come help us is because their facilities themselves are short for the service that they need to provide to Calgary. So this is like what they're going to get. They're going to get a spot that they're going to allow Calgarians to come into very easily, just as they're saying, we can go to Calgary. Why do we want to go to Calgary? That's why we live in Cochrane and work in Cochrane and help. Okay, so trying to move fast here. What's my, oh, Jesus, sorry. So basically, the cost, the rates will go up, they've already said, in one year, everything can change. The senior rate will go up because their senior age is 65, not 60. The average 147 versus the 162 doesn't sound bad. Some rates will go down, I believe, youth. But like I say, seniors, for some of us in that 60 to 65 category, it's going up. Adults is going up. Everything else is going up. So the average, if you looked at their whole table, which I've done and I've got at home if you need, it doesn't look that good, as just the 147 to 162 change.
Closing thoughts?
Closing thoughts? Again, I just, thank you so much for taking the time to hear us. Obviously, I would like to follow up, because most of my additional points here came from all the questions that you councillors so gratefully asked and so neededly asked, because they were very good questions. So if you have, would like an explanation on the lounge, not an explanation, but an answer to your question of the feasibility of a lounge?
It looks like Counselor Wilson has a question for you.
Hi, Beth, thank you. I'm going to take the bait, and not because I care about the lounge more than the other 150 questions that have been asked, I just, out of the YMCA proposals, one of the areas that I see the most glaring vagary, where I go, I have no idea how that. where I go, "I have no idea how that's going to work." So, please, if you have any thoughts on the lounge, fill me in.
And in addition to what Wendell and Barb and others have already said, I believe part of when they had to cut the lounge facility from the expansion, that also cut the running water, cut the ability to have electricity. So, when it was taken on that they would look to get the third party, they were asking, if my understanding is correct, they were asking the incoming third party to put up $250,000 worth of leasehold improvements that would then stay with the facility, and they would be given their annual one-year contract, as everybody gets at the facility. So, to put in that kind of an investment that they would not be able to take out and not guarantee that they would get the renewal of their contract after the year, no company, and there were people who were looking at it. No company was able to match that. So, that, when thankfully council brought in the 125, that was supposed to be a halfway meeting, right? We'll put in 125, somebody else will put in the extra. And that's probably where Barb mentioned SLS ended up being that extra partner. And so, I think the limitation for getting the lounge to be feasible, the lounge space, is it's still lacking food. And that's a big hindrance to us now still. Thank goodness, we've made so many operations. This is the first year they've been able to offer food outside of a bag of peanuts or bag of chips, which is not the most nutritional after a healthy sport. And so, we still are in high need of food. You get the food in there with the facility, and that's where you get your viability.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions? And I will give you a follow-up of my other points that came out of the other questions in email after. And I appreciate that you're addressing all of this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ken Parker? Ken's coming in. Yep, there we go. Thank you, Ken.
Yeah, my name's Ken Parker. I've long-term resident of Cochrane, probably longer than most of the people in the room here, but since 1983. And I saw that piece of land down there when it was a racing track, and they used to have little horse buggies run around there on a long weekend in September. So, it's come a long ways, and it was wonderful to see people like Bruce Kendall here tonight, one of the original people, who had that going, the other fellow too. And I'm getting old, I can't remember names. But the neat thing is, we can all stand here and say, we can see farther because we stand on the shoulders of giants. And those people had a vision of making that place what it is today. It's absolutely phenomenal what that place does. The letter I wrote to all of you, it offers program and programming and opportunities for numerous activities and sports for all ages and interests that promote a healthy lifestyle and wellness. And boy, you get to be my age, we know about wellness and how important that is. And the social, the social environment that that provides. It's absolutely incredible. And so, it's investment in the health and wellbeing of Cochrane and the area's citizens. So, if it's got some problems and some money issues, if it was built by people in Cochrane that had such a vision, surely we can solve the problems that if it's short some money, it loses some money. We can make an in-Cochrane solution for it, like we did when we built the darn thing. So, I guess I would argue for a local management solution for local problems rather than bringing in an outside organization. I read the, I printed off the YMCA Calgary's Ten Year Strategic Plan. How's the time doing? And it's Calgary, Calgary, Calgary. You know, and if you guys had trouble running the town council and you're short of money, would you, would you say, "Let's bring in the city of Calgary, and we'll hand them over the management of Cochrane to the city of Calgary. They can look after," or Edmonton, or heaven forbid, maybe Ottawa, or other things. So, guys, we can do it here in Cochrane. I'm sure we can. And hearing all these people that spoke ahead of me tonight, good grief, there's some wonderful talent in this place. We can do a study as to what are the problems. We can figure out what needs to be done to fix those individual problems. And anyway, I've got a minute left. Let's just go. Keep that darn lounge there. The soul guys like me, we need that social thing. We, I curl during the day, so we go to the coffee lounge. That's where we do a lot of socializing there. The backup, what Mike Buxton's wife said, without that lounge, the curling rink going there would have been a non-starter. Wouldn't, Mike's right. It wouldn't have happened. Concerned about the fees getting unaffordable as they go up, and they're trying to make, you know, get away from any deficits that are around. We're worried for, I'm also worried for the current employees. And lastly, let's get a detailed study of what's going on. Let's, we can work it out ourself. What are some of the other models in the country that, that have, there's lots of other curling rinks around, lots of other recreational facilities. This place does an incredible job of providing for the town and our wellness. So, let's, let's keep it Cochrane. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kent. Valerie McCracken? There she comes from the back.
I think I can still talk. Good evening. My name is Valerie McCracken, and I'm here tonight representing the Cochrane Environmental Action Committee, who is the not-for-profit sponsor of the Cochrane Farmers Market. No, I can't speak. I'll be fine. A little dry. So, I'm here to express our concerns, pose some questions about the proposed recreational facility management for the Spray Lake Sawmills Center. I don't think it needs to be said again that the Spray Lake Center has been so much more than a recreational facility for our community. It's our community center, it's our event center, it's a place for parties. I'm hearing about a lot of parties in the lounge that I wasn't even aware of. I need to attend more often, I guess. We go there for community meetings, we hold our trade shows, tournaments, socializing, and so much more. There's no other facility like Spray Lakes in Cochrane that can provide the space and amenities available at the center. If users are turned away from this facility because they can't afford the price of entry, because they're no longer allowed to participate, they have nowhere else to go. There are no other options in the community. And if you've been a resident of Cochrane for more than a few years, you're probably connected to this building in some way. We moved here in 1998, so it's pretty much been built over the time that our family has been in Cochrane. From the very first foundations of this facility, the hearts and the hands of the Cochrane community played a significant role. So, now it pulls at our hearts that this facility may be put in the hands of an organization that's not Cochrane-based. We take pride in the fact, real pride in the fact, that we endeavor to build our community and solve problems with solutions that are made in Cochrane and that reflect our unique community and our values. I recently read something where it says, "In buildings, we talk about columns and beams, but we never talk about in our community how we also have load-bearing people, the people who hold up the weight, make sure that things happen, make sure that the organizations continue." I think we could build some pretty substantial structures in Cochrane with all the load-bearing people that we are fortunate to have in this community. While many of the SLS center users are recreational, I'm going to speak tonight really as those of us like the Farmers Market who are basically hosting special events in that, in the center and making it a community hub. I often refer to our presence there as cross-pollinators because we bring people that would never come to the arena and then go, "What? You have curling, and you have this? I came to the market, and I discovered this great facility." And we have people who come to the hockey tournament and go, "You have a Farmers Market in Cochrane? This is great. I'm going to come back next week." It's been a win-win partnership, and I don't think that we've been unique in being able to work with the staff and build those really good relationships that allowed us to grow. Just a little bit of history. The Cochrane Farmers Market is an Alberta-approved Farmers Market. We opened in 1998, and we held our first indoor market at the Spray Lake Center in 2011 with our first Christmas market. I'm probably the only person who looked at an 800-meter running track and said, "I can fill that with vendors. Just let me try." And we did, and it was successful. And in, we now have a two-day Christmas market, and in 2018, we added indoor spring markets. The building allows us to see how we want to use it. We're able to explore the ways that it can be used. I have ten minutes? Yes, I'm just looking at that, just confirming. In 2020, those of you who are around know that we had to move the market and, because of COVID. And it's the unique thing about Cochrane is that we needed a new place. We were able to go to the town. The town worked with us. We were immediately welcomed by the SLS Center. There was no question that they were going to give us a space to move there, to continue to run the market at that very difficult time. And it's now our year-round home. All of our markets are hosted there. And it, you know, is what we see as our home for the foreseeable future. And all of that happened in what we would refer to as old-fashioned, good-faith agreements. We just knew that the town would be there for us. We knew that Spray Lakes would open their doors for us, and the market was continuing to exist. So, now we ask, will there be good-faith agreements? Good faith and support going forward? Is that still going to be there for us? We, as the market, like many of the other users that I'm learning tonight, operate on a year-to-year basis for our scheduling. There was a comment made, "Well, as long as you have a contract, it'll be honored." We don't have a contract. We put in our schedule for the year. We work out the weekends that will be mutually beneficial for the facility and for us, and we do that. So, what happens when there's not that kind of consideration? What happens if the new management decides that Farmers Market just doesn't fit? Just doesn't fit anymore? We do put a burden on the facility. Christmas market, nine thousand customers in two days fills the building. When we're in the parking lot, we take up parking stalls. So, at what point will the value of the Farmers Market be less than the value of being able to use those parking stalls for some other program that the facility wants to run? And sometimes, our success is our enemy. We know that as we continue to grow, we place challenges in the facility, giving us that growth and being able to accommodate it, accommodate us. And rental rates, you know, we do pay rent, but it's the same thing. Will that change? Will that change suddenly? So, some of the things that we have, are seeing as a problem is that there isn't assurance that all users will be allowed to stay. You know, we would recommend that the contract somewhere has at least a clause. If someone came to me and said, "You don't have a place for the market next year, I can't pick up the market and move it. I need at least a year or more to find a new spot." We were fortunate that there was a big parking lot and all the amenities to move during COVID. We wouldn't be so lucky if we had to do it again. So, there needs to be assurances. There at least at a minimum needs to be something that says, "If we can accommodate you, you will be given notice. You will be given a timeframe in order to make changes to what you do." And I have so many scruples here. Sorry, I was crossing stuff up. But I think those are the main things. In the end, and someone else just said this, there's no free lunch. Was that Beth? I think Beth stole that. If something seems too good to be true, it probably is. And I look at the numbers, and I say, "Well, what are we giving away?" I urge you to do all due diligence, listen to the users, listen to the community, and honestly share and understand what are we going to be giving up in order to meet targets that have been set and that are being held up as being where we need to go. Only go ahead when you know this is something that you can truly, that the solution is something that you can say proudly, "Cochrane." That's what I urge you to do. Be proud of where we're going with this. And believe me, we have people in the community that can make this work. The load-bearing people are there. They got us this far. We need to figure out how to use them to take us to the next stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Thank you. I don't see any questions. Thanks. Matt Wiles? Oh, sorry. Counselor Nagel had a question for you. Valerie, oh, for me, sorry. Question for me.
Yeah, just, we've been sitting here for three and a half hours, which is the duration of Lord of the Rings, which is a pretty long movie. Wondering if we could get a bathroom break?
You want a five-minute break?
Yes, please.
Okay, come back at 9:00 PM. Work for you? Thank you. Thank you.
You get the context there. It's a Y. It's called experience. And I'm going to tell you here tonight is that what the Spray Lake-Somuel Centre needs is a lot of things, but they're not going to be solved by the YMCA. You're probably best to adjourn this meeting, give Michael direction to counsel the whole thing. Because what you need there is did they approach you or did you approach them? Because you have what they want. You have a pool. You have a hockey rinks under one roof. You have this big, grand facility. And if you notice in Calgary, that's what they manage. And guess what? Those facilities have problems. They have crappy ice. They have crappy conditions. And there's nobody to be found who's accountable for those things. And where do people go? They just go out the door and they have that, you know, bonding together over something negative, but we as humanity tend to be a little bit bad that way. You know how you galvanize over negative things? Cochrane should galvanize over something very positive here and look forward to improving it and not having a magic wand that just says, oh, we're better. You need to have a hand in how you're making it better. The Wizard of Oz in the movie from the 1940s stood behind a curtain waving his hands around them when they revealed what was back there. It didn't fix anything. And that's the same with the YMCA. I mean, I think, excuse me, I think the board that runs it needs to maybe have a different mission statement, be a little more hands-on on what's going on down there. Because there's things that need to be fixed. There's things like a broken bench where a small child of under two years old fell through the bleachers in Totem Three right before my eyes, falling six feet to the ground, slammed its head on the floor like it was a ten-pin bowling ball. And I went to the CAO and the manager and all of them and I said, you guys got trouble coming. You need to fix that. And I said, it's very easy to fix. To this day, a year and a half later, there's nothing been done. There's lights out in the washrooms in the main lobby that have been out for four years. Now, if I'm going in there to trust that I am in safe conditions, one afternoon we were swimming in the swimming pool. There was O'Henry floating in the water, ladies and gentlemen, but that's not the problem. They were shut down three times that afternoon. It's not because there were three different people that were having that difficulty. It was just that the staff, without training, without instruction, didn't clean it properly the first time. So what I'm saying is, without running people into the ground, wages are wages. Public criticism comes a dime a dozen in these facilities. But you need to support what you've got and try and reinvent it. That's what I would suggest to all of you. I can tell you more stories about what I hear here tonight. One of the major being is of great concern over the lounge. Over the lounge. My gosh. Let's be global thinkers. You know, I mean, there's some guys here not going to like this, but you know, the number one reason that curling doesn't grow is because there's always a half-heel stored up in a liquor cabinet on the top floor in the curling rink. How are you going to get your youth into curling? Forget the lounge. Let's get some youth programs. Let's get youth going. The booze, it'll take care itself. And anyway, those are some of my thoughts from my experience. And just picking on the facility is looking at some of the small things like lights outside the building, like come into the main field house where the lacrosse field is and the gymnastics on a winter's night. You got some fancy covering over the front door. They call them, you know, when there's logs and it's all falls through. There's no light there. The other entry has no light. It's like going into the players' sneaky entrance at some rink out in Ramsey, Alberta. There's things like that that you can uplift the face of it and make it safer and better for everybody and it comes right from your table and his pen right there. Thank you. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Nailed that. I don't think we have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. You guys have a wonderful night. And I must commend this lady right here. You could teach a class on attentiveness. You have, I've watched a little bit, all of you tonight. Don't want to scare you, but my goodness, your focus, outstanding. Thanks so much.
Well, hopefully, hopefully now people can give each of us kudos all around the table. Thank you, Mr. Pla. Yeah, I'm, I'm just kidding. Next up, Gord Kopethorn.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council. My name's Gord Kopethorn. I'm here on behalf of Curling Alberta. I am the current president of the board and a seating member of the Governance Advisory Committee for Curling Canada. So to open, I'm here to say that on behalf of the board, we unanimously, unanimous, okay, we all support the position of the Cochrane Curling Club as narrated by Kendall. Kendall did a good job of speaking to their concerns. But I'm not here to tell a tale of woe or fear. I want to actually narrate accomplishment and credit. The Cochrane Curling community, which to me is the Curling Club, the members and Spray Lakes operations, the Cochrane Curling community has grown into a commendable operation in Alberta. There's 188 curling clubs in Alberta and Cochrane is in the top 10% in terms of success and growth. Most clubs aspire to be more like Cochrane. There's four things that tend to make up a successful curling operation, a successful business model. Number one is strong leadership and management. Number two is well-trained staff and a good curling surface. Doesn't that be phenomenal? Has to be good. Number three is a thriving, invested community. And number four is an inviting social environment. Over the last 10 years, Cochrane Curling Club and Spray Lakes have worked together to build those pillars. They've had to do them individually and they've gotten there, but they have them in a balanced position, which is actually creating success. In Curling Alberta, we use a variety of KPI and metrics, but I'll throw two at you just to kind of narrate what their success looks like. Grassroots and community is quite often viewed from the lens of youth. In the late 90s, early 2000s, there was no high school program and junior curling usually constituted eight to 12 kids with next-to-no retention rate. In the last four to five years, the two public schools together are putting in excess of 75 student athletes through each year. And the junior curling programs are a minimum of 20 kids with a high retention rate. That's comparable to most big clubs in Calgary, including the Calgary Curling Club. Another lens that we like to use for measuring success is from the competitive perspective. We are a provincial organization. We care about grassroots and competitive. And in competition, you measure championships, success. In the late 90s, early 2000s, Cochrane had one banner. Cheryl Bernard herself pointed out that was one of its biggest fails. It had one U-18 banner. If you were going there now, it is somewhere between eight to 10. I haven't counted recently. It covers U-18, U-15, U-20, adult, single gender, multi-gender, provincial, national. Cochrane has a national championship banner now. I'll throw this one at you. In the last five years, Cochrane has trained and put out three different athletes that have represented Canada on behalf of Curling Canada. That's a boat akin to Mason Raymond playing for Curling or Hockey Canada at the Worlds. We did three in five years. That's context of success. So Curling Alberta's stance is we have to protect the integrity of their business model so that success doesn't unintentionally erode. The final aspect I'm going to send to this is, as the president of the board, I've had over the last month, a variety of managers and directors from across the province reach out to me and say, what's going on in Cochrane and why in the world do they want to change what is successful for them and were afraid that it may become unsuccessful? One simple example is Okatoks. They're currently working through trying to define a new community facility. And they are looking at Cochrane and spinning it as a tale of, look what they have done. Look how they're doing it. We want to do more of that. They are, as is a lot of the province, just cautious that we may unintentionally unravel that picture of success. And then what do their councils, what does the province actually take from that in terms of building their facilities and their communities? So on behalf of Curling Alberta, I simply stand here in front of you to say, on behalf of the whole province, we respectfully ask that you really be mindful of protecting the integrity of their business model because it is a pillar to 188 clubs across the province. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Gord. I don't see any questions. Dimitri Leonidas? I said that quickly.
You said it perfectly.
It's because I said it quickly.
I hope I have something intelligent to add after listening to everyone. I have nothing prepared and I'm weary of your time and I can see my clock. First, council mayor, thank you for your service. You have difficult, difficult job to do and I respect that. I'm privileged to have three memberships, gym memberships to my employer. I have one in the Ampersand Building. It's a state-of-the-art facility and one in Calgary First Tower. And I, those are free to me, but I choose to pay for one here as well. And as a Cochraneite, not only because of a Cochraneite, the unique culture of our facility makes me come here to work out, even though I can go down from one of my two offices down to, you know, 10 floors and have the gym there and work out whenever I want, but yet I choose to drive to come here. In the presentations tonight, I tried to understand why we would get the why involved. And at first I thought, oh, maybe we would get access to the city. No, actually, I'm starting to believe they would get access to our facility. Calgary's growing. We're a separate city. And the whole time I'm listening to all this and I read in the papers, I see that we would have to fund the losses. We'd have to fund capex. They put in some kind of budget to us and I'm sure you've done your job to review it, whereby there's a notion that we could probably recover the operating costs and maybe, and we'll still have to fund the capex. They actually admit you'll never recoup all of it. The thing is, and we, and there's a break fee. There's a breakpoint where we can actually get out of it with six months' notice. But if we get into this for about five, six months, five, six years, three, four years, and then suddenly a new mayor comes along, a new council comes along and says, you know what? This isn't working out for Cochrane and we want to get out. There is a cost. Maybe there's not a financial cost. The cost is the culture of that facility. And this is why I have two wonderful free facilities available to me. I come here to work out. People are, you come inside. I don't curl. I've never been in the lounge. I don't even understand curling, yet I watch sometimes. I don't play picketball, yet I watch when I work out upstairs. So I don't use any of that, those things. Yet, when I come to, to work out, there's always someone nice to talk to. There's always something, something nice to do and it's the culture. So if we get into this with the why and then we want to break away three years from now, you're never going to recreate that culture. It's just going to be the Ampersand or some other place. So I'm going to close, because it's late and save you two minutes, by giving you a recommendation. I build multi, I build multi-billion dollar infrastructure and I'm not going to say what I built because it's not nice. And I've seen this kind of movie before and I'm sure you've thought about this. It's really simple in my mind. If there's a break fee, pay it. Get out of it now. Don't waste any more of your valuable brain power on this adventure and simply take SLS and make it a department of the city like Public Works, you know? And hire a general manager if you have to eliminate the board. I'm not saying the board's doing a bad job. Hire a general manager, someone that will manage it, maintain the culture. It's just going to be, you may look at it as a cost center. I look at it as an attraction to living in Cochrane. I've been here six years. Love the place. It's an attraction, not a cost center. And you know what? We're already paying for it through our taxes. I just did some quick math on my, on my phone while I was waiting. We have 38,000 residents as of 2025, I believe. It's like $84 a resident. Of course, a three-year-old's not going to pay. Our budget's 40 million. Our only source of revenue is property taxes and user fees. So, you know, we have $40 million. I think I heard might cost $3 million with capex and funding this year. I think I heard a number like 7.8% of the budget, but we're still paying it. It's still coming out of our taxes. If you, if you feel better, we could add a line on our property taxes, SLS. No one will complain for the incremental amount. So I'll close by with 45 seconds. Pay the break fee if there's a break fee. Wait, let's use our brain power for something else and make it a department of the city. And thank you and good night.
Thank you. Thank you and good night. That was almost a mic drop moment there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Council. As a super senior, it's well past my bedtime. First of all, I'm a user, a curler, a swimmer, a floor shuffler, a ballroom dancer, and I run speakers groups for seniors on the bowl, for Alberta 55-plus, for Big Country Senior Sports Society, and for the Warm Water Therapy Pool Society, which I want to thank previous councils and many of you here for all of your support in us growing Spray Lakes into such a beautiful facility. Having run provincial curling championships here and many other things, I have to tell you that curlers from Grand Prairie to Lethbridge admire this place. Everybody talks about it. And that doesn't come by accident. There's been many local builders. The staff here is excellent. In brief on curling, if you've got lousy ice makers, you've got no curlers. They'll move. I also had the privilege of working with the town back 2010 to 2012 when we designed the aquatic center and the curling club. We took StanTech, supposedly the best engineers all over. We saw eight or nine different pools in Calgary. And there was only one, people will find this quite different because there hasn't been too much talk in this direction. There was only one that made money in all of Calgary. And that was West Hills and it was run by the Y. And when we probed as to the how and the why, it was because they sold $1,500 memberships. And in corporate Calgary, that might be a good model. In Cochrane, I put that question to you whether it's a good model or not. Many people have talked about the lack of detail and this isn't a criticism. I realize the CAO has to give a 30,000-foot presentation, but the difference between a one and a half million dollar deficit and a one and a half million dollar surplus, I think to many of us has not been properly explained. Is that a question of incompetence and existing management? To say that the Y has many positives, nobody disagrees with that, but as various people have talked, these issues have to be dealt with. When I dealt with your predecessors, none of whom are here on council, I was told in confidence, and I know Noel has a bad memory here from the media, that the cost overruns were in excess of $10 million. And that's why we didn't get a kitchen in the curling rink. That's why we didn't get plumbing and electricity. So there's a lot of bad history there that Y or anybody else is not going to solve unless, as this gentleman said, you've got to roll up your sleeves, look at the showers, look at the benches, look at all the things that may not work. I could go on and on, but I just wanted to at least make those points. Your life is never simple, but I think you've heard a very large number of people ask a lot of questions which legitimize, at least in part, going back and reexamining where you're at and all these issues that should be dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Cynthia Zier. Thank you for letting us all speak tonight. Everybody's talking about the curling. I'm going to talk generally because I saw an interesting point come, come up today. It's that $75 fee that a little light went on and I thought, okay, they're, they think they're giving us this huge benefit of a $75 fee. That means anyone can go to any Y and use the facility. But I have to tell you that there's this vacuum effect with Cochrane and Calgary. And if we open our doors to all the members of the Y in Calgary, we will be flooded and we will lose our culture. So I came tonight thinking, okay, I want to hear why this is a good idea. But now I truly believe that we should not have any agreement with the Y. I don't think we should proceed with it. I think we're going to lose a gem. The Y has a mandate to supply facilities to all their members in Calgary and they're booked. They don't have space anymore and we're offering them a gem. Our Spray Lakes facility is a gem and we're offering it to them for free. And all their members now have an additional facility. And I know this because I work in the health area and at one point, we offered our ambulances to Calgary. We never saw them again. They were gone. Like Calgary will just absorb everything good we have and we will have to fight to get it back. And this will happen with the Spray Lakes as well. So, and it's all around that $75 fee. They presented it to you guys as a huge benefit, but it's not. It's not a benefit. We'll lose a gem that we've created for many, many, a lot of hard work went into creating this and I think we need to fight to keep it. Cochrane, not let it be absorbed into the Y. And that's all I have to say. And thank you so much, you guys. It's a late night for you. And no questions, right?
That wasn't a question. That was a statement. No questions.
Good evening. My name is David Cooper. I've been a resident in Cochrane for 16 years. I wrote to you all earlier and I provided a much fuller written input to the collection. I thought I'd like to come and speak tonight because I wanted to make it clear that I am not opposed to the town partnering with an outside organization to improve the delivery of recreation service. The town has done much right with the current SLS center operations and it would be unfortunate to diminish what is an excellent facility. As a parent, I appreciate the Curling Club especially. My daughter started curling at the age of eight and thanks to the dedication of Curling Club members, she continues to enjoy a sport that has allowed her to compete locally, provincially, and nationally. As a participant, I enjoyed many seasons at the old Curling Club and now at the SLS Center. I have been proud to work as a coach in both the club's outstanding junior program and for competitive teams. As a former president and board member of the Cochrane Curling Club, I can attest to the importance of the sport of curling in the town of Cochrane and the strong feelings surrounding it. When we began planning the move, there was considerable and frequent feedback from the various curling groups, which was often vocal. Many club members expressed concern about losing control over curling operations. However, much of the input focused on whether the new facility could provide a social environment that at least matched the existing Curling Club's lounge. During the Rock the Waves campaign, town and council made several key decisions to reduce costs concerning the inclusion of a social facility. This resulted in a loss of revenue and a decline in utility, which was acknowledged beyond Cochrane. It is only due to the current Curling Club board and the management of the SLS Center that the town enjoys an accessible, vibrant, and valuable social facility, which fosters the essential community-building aspect of sports and recreation. The primary driving factor for the town seems to be the potential savings. What remains unclear to me is how these savings will be reliably achieved, quantified, and maintained. One of the significant successes of the SLS Center is that the local management team is onsite, accessible, and prepared to understand the needs of user groups and individuals. The local nature of management focuses on serving the Cochrane community. I don't want to dwell on the what could, might happen with any decision to outsource to YMCA Calgary. It's sufficient to note that many of the fears that accompanied the Curling Club's move to the SLS Center have resurfaced. The difference is that the earlier move explicitly aimed to grow the sport of curling in a modern, purpose-built facility, whereas the current proposal is focused on saving money. What I would like to focus on is the known, the loss of the On the Rocks social facility. YMCA Calgary has been clear that it will not operate on the rocks and will not allow others to do so, as a social facility that sells alcohol does not align with its values. As the owner, it is the town of Cochrane's responsibility to determine what facilities it wishes to have in the SLS Center. If the town of Cochrane wants the SLS Center to include a social facility like On the Rocks, then it is the town's job to engage a service provider that meets the town's requirements. It appears that administration is hastily pursuing an agreement and engaging a contractor that explicitly states it does not plan to operate the SLS Center with user interests as a priority. The town needs to be clearer in its expectations. Control over service offerings is crucial, including social facilities. If any potential service provider cannot beat our expectations, these should not be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, David. You must have practiced that. You were right on the five minutes. That is, that exhausts our speaker's list. I will, at this time, call if there is anyone else in the gallery that wishes to speak that hasn't spoken already. Okay. Please come forward, state your name and who you're representing. I know, but read it in.
Well, my name is Jenny Warner and I want to come to you as a mother of three children, but also as the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I have three children. My youngest daughter loves ringette, so we're on the, on the ice playing ringette. She actually won two golds this year. My other daughter is a gymnast, so she's doing gymnastics. My husband and I actually tried curling for the first time this year. My first time curling, I had to play against that guy. He came and he had a Curl Alberta sweatshirt and I was like, this is my first time. I'm not that competitive, so. But I'm not here to talk to you about curling. I came to listen and to understand and I think it's great that you guys are hosting this hearing for people to, to share their feelings and to try to understand a little bit more. I've lived in Cochrane for four years before that Calgary, but what I fell in love with was the community of this town. And I've had the privilege of working in this town since moving here. And I love my job at the Chamber and I love working with the town and everybody in it. So after listening to everything and trying to get a better understanding, one thought came to my mind and if you leave tonight and you drive into your communities, if you live in Cochrane, you'll see a sign and it says, find it in Cochrane, off local. So my question, the YMCA, can you find the solution here in Cochrane? That's it.
Okay. Thank you for speaking. Is there anyone else in the gallery? I see someone's hand in the back.
Good evening. I'll keep this brief because I
Good evening. I'll keep this brief because everyone's here pretty late. My name is Scott Gelfus. I'm the owner of Dangle Show Hockey. We operate the skate shop and shop inside Spray Lakes Arena. So we've been there. Spray Lakes used to operate it themselves and financially it didn't work out so well. We put a proposal. They brought us in and things are going really well. And I think as an organization, we've kind of embedded ourselves into the community rather than just as a business. We know just about all the families that play hockey and it is a meeting place. It's fantastic. I wanted to share my experience with council and everyone here. There are two YMCA's with hockey rinks operating in Calgary that have skate shops in them. I know the owners of both of these skate shops. And both of them, at one point, were operated by the city of Calgary and then became operated by the Y. Very similar to the situation we're currently looking at here. The feedback, I asked them for feedback because they've been through this, you know, I'm worried about my shop. Am I going to get a lease? Am I going to be open? Am I going to be thrown out? Who knows? But I asked them, what was your experience? And they said, what happened when the Y came in to the facilities they were operating in, doing the exact same thing that I do, is that because the Y didn't own the building, they said the maintenance and care of the facility went to the floor. So unless something absolutely fell apart or the city provided capital funding to fix it, they would not fix it, they would not maintain it, they wouldn't paint it, they wouldn't do anything because it cost them money. And of course, the Y is a not-for-profit like the Spray Lakes Society that currently runs the building. So profit is not the biggest thing. But their experience in Calgary in the exact same situation I'm in, they told me, you know, getting a lease from the Y and dealing with the Y is just like dealing with anyone else. But they said, when it comes to the building itself, they don't care. They're fine if things wear down. They're fine if things, unless the city of Calgary says, here's capital money to go fix that, they won't fix it, they won't maintain it. That doesn't mean they don't have cleaning staff and they don't have good staff and good operators that do things. But in general, their overall mentality is, we don't own it, we're not fixing it. And if the thing runs down to the point where it's going to fall apart, pull out and go on. Now, that hasn't happened in Calgary because the city of Calgary continually adds more money to maintain their facilities. And they should and the city of, town of Cochrane should do the exact same thing. Continue to invest capital money to keep this wonderful facility open and operating. But be careful that if the Y has a budget for XYZ, it's probably not going to be spent on routine maintenance. So that's the experience I've heard from two other operators in Y-run facilities in the city of Calgary that I know personally. So I asked them before I came to this meeting. The other thing, there was three things I heard tonight that I thought were really good that maybe you want to double think about. One gentleman said, why not a plebiscite? Election's coming. Instead of the three hundred people that came here or a hundred people that came here, let the whole, let the whole town decide. I just thought that was a really good idea. But just to pass along my, my experience from talking to other people that have been through this transition, witnessed it with their own eyes, they said, when the city of Calgary run it, everything was fixed, safety was at a paramount. They said, when the Y came in, maintenance, upkeep, and safety, down the tubes. If they had to spend money on it, it didn't get done. They'd rather let it wear down. I might be, I hadn't seen it with my own eyes, but that's the information I was told. I just wanted to share that. And it's a great facility, another great thing for the city of Cochrane. Please do your due diligence before you make a decision. Thanks. Any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you, Scott. Did you wish to speak?
Yes. I wasn't planning on it, but I'm winging it. My name is Nikki Dolan. I am a board member of the Cochrane Ringette Association. I'm also our tournament director and I help that parking chaos that was discussed about the Christmas market, our tournaments the same weekend, so we add to that chaos. I'm sorry. But basically, what I wanted to say is, we are a small association. We're growing, but we're small. And we just brought home our first provincial banner and our U-14 team got to come and hang out with the mayor and spend time. So that was really cool for our athletes and our coaches. But my concern, like others have stated with the smaller user groups, is we don't have the same influence and resources that someone like mine or hockey does. So with the vague language that's in the proposal now saying that, you know, everything will be honored, without something actually in writing, if and when costs go up, ice costs go up, smaller user groups just don't have the resources to compete with the big guys. And we're going to be pushed out. And for a sport like ringette, that is a female sport, that is something that is rare, to push that to the sidelines does a disservice to the entire community. And I, I think we have a very passionate group of parents and athletes and I just, I don't want to lose that. So I just want to make sure that whether we, like there's somewhere, like Marnie had stated about, sorry, councillor Padeko stated, just changing the verbiage, just putting something in there to state that, it's so vague. And what's to say that two, three years down the road, they don't change? That's just, that's my concern.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you speaking.
Jeff, if you open that, I'll just add one quick thing. I hope we're already spoken.
Well, if we open that door, I think we're going to be here till next Christmas. Yeah.
But the parking problem is, is half ice hockey. All of a sudden, you've got six teams.
Parking.
Instead of only three.
Is there? Is there anyone else wishing to speak that haven't spoken already?
Thanks, Jeff.
You've been my ear at the trade show. Anyone else wishing to speak tonight? That's twice. I'm going to ask one more time. Anyone else in the gallery wishing to speak? Okay, that concludes the public portion. We'll now turn it over to Mr. Derekot to get to the questions that were raised and clarify anything for council if council has any questions.
Yeah, thank you to council. I think all will be pleased to hear that. I'm not intending to spend a whole bunch of time up here. What I will say is that this event in particular around something other than what we typically have, public hearings, planning-related issues, this was truly, I think, a reflection of some community dialogue that was really, really healthy. And I too wanted to just put myself in the category of grateful for council for pushing for this, even though administration hadn't originally considered it. There was a lot of, I think, really healthy dialogue that took place here tonight. And we had a number of our administrative team tracking and grabbing all, all of the questions. Administration's going to get a chance to come back when this appears before council again. And I think in the interest of time and where we're at, we'll address those, those questions specifically there. But I do just want to note that it's really clear that there's some alignment on, I think, what we're trying to achieve in terms of protecting, you know, the unique culture. I heard a lot about how people appreciate, not just a unique culture of Spray Lakes, but I think that's a broader commentary on what they value about belonging to the Cochrane community that I, is clearly identified with across the user groups and the folks here tonight. And those that are relying on that facility now in protecting their usage of that facility for their programs that they care so much and they've invested so much time and effort in building and maintaining those programs that our community enjoys. And the inherent obligation that we have to balance all of that against protecting the taxpayers of the community is a challenging question with, without easy answers. I think if there was easy answers, we'd already be exploring those and on our way. But with that, I think that's all I would have to say. I would obviously be happy to answer any immediate questions of clarity that council may have this evening and pleased to do so.
Okay, there was a couple that we raised and hopefully the councillors have had those. I know councillor Nagel, you had one. Councillor Padeko, you had one. Councillor Padeko, go for you first.
I'll think about what that question was. But what is the next step in this process? I think that's going to be my major question. Where do we go from here? This is now closed. We've heard that we aren't supposed to be taking any more emails or thoughts from the general public, but where does this all end up?
Yeah, thank you. So that's completely at the discretion of council. There's no preset or required process. Obviously, administration will just bring that forward for council to direct what those next steps are. And I think that next step is to decide what to do next. And then inside of that, obviously, there's a number of options that council has to explore.
And I did remember my question. Was there a member, was there a representative of the Y asked to come here this evening?
Yeah. Thank you, yes. The YMCA, again, I would just describe it very much like the county, very much aware of the event. They believed that this was a community space and a community dialogue and they wanted to leave that dialogue to the community was their take on that. But I know that they're watching and observing and trying to learn as much as they possibly can about the questions and concerns the community has.
And I think lastly, the only thing that I would ask is that when this does come back, that there is some discussion on what a plebiscite would look like for this item. I think that, I want to thank all the community for coming out here tonight. It is overwhelming to see this many people who obviously took the time out of their schedules to come. And also, I mean, what the general public doesn't understand is the amount of emails that we have received in the background is incredible. So thank you for sharing your thoughts. I would like to know what that looks like, whether or not, you know, the options of it, the good, the bad, the ugly. But I think this is something that firstly, in my mind, council needs to take some deep, deep breaths on. It's, it's not just a decision that we're going to be making in the next two weeks.
Understood. Happy to include that in when it comes back to council.
Okay, let's try to refrain from debate. Councillor Nagel, I know you've been very clear about that. So I just, when I saw you, I just.
I've got questions.
Yeah, I know. You reminded me of your point earlier.
Yeah. The question that I had was when the, when the actual proposed agreement will be made public.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, through council to councillor Nagel, that's not generally a course of action that we would do in any negotiation or contract agreement. We don't generally publicize those agreements. I'm open to how we ensure clarity around that and I have to give that some thought as well as get some, some legal advice. And just as a reminder to the group that it's not simply the property of the town of Cochrane. There's other parties to that agreement that we would have to speak with about what that dynamic might look like. But I appreciate the question and we'll do some work on that.
Is the current operating agreement with the volunteer board public knowledge?
I don't believe that it is actively listed publicly anywhere.
Okay. I actually thought it was public. Okay, then my question is, when will, so you said it'll come back to council to decide next steps. Will that be the next council meeting on Monday?
I think we're going to have to do a little bit of work with council to determine what those steps look like. It depends a little bit about what process pieces council might want to see as part of that. I think we may need to have just an initial conversation about that rather than the item itself. That could happen as soon as Monday. I don't think, you know, I think with respect to some of the questions and issues that have been raised, administration would not intend to present this for a decision point on Monday, but we do need to determine what comes next.
Okay, thanks.
Councillor McFadden.
Yes, thank you. One of the questions I heard raised was, and there's much talk about, you know, if it doesn't work out, there's a, the six-month exit opportunity. But my understanding of that is because Rocky View County and the town of Cochrane are partners, that the town of Cochrane couldn't unilaterally say, we're out, right? That would have to be a joint decision by Rocky View County and the town of Cochrane to cancel that contract, much as it is required of both of us to enter the contract?
That's correct. And it does also reflect the current arrangement and circumstance. So Cochrane cannot now unilaterally change the management approach to the facility. We have to work with our ownership partners.
Sure. That was how I understood. I just wanted to provide clarity to the public question that, yeah, if Rocky View County thinks it's working great and we don't think so, we won't have an easy exit out of it. So I just wanted to provide that information. I think, and, and yeah, and I wonder, because I think my inbox has already received some more emails and questions. And so I am kind of, I don't want to be obviously not reading emails and not engaging with folks on an important question. Is there some sort of a legislative tool that we could use to kind of keep that open if we extended the public hearing, something, some way to make sure we're still engaging?
Yeah. Thank you. Perhaps, I don't know, Jaylene, if you, if you have any thoughts on that. I think in the short term, while Jaylene maybe has a moment to consider that, is to, at minimum, forward those on to administration so that we can compile them and have them appropriately brought forward. I'm very open to going back. I think maybe the question, maybe we just need to go and sit and reflect on our own procedural parameters as well as other legislative work to make sure we, you know, honor those processes. But that's not intended to be a way to restrict folks from sharing how they feel about this. And we can give some feedback on to what that might look like. Mr. Robertson, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
I think the only thing I would add to that would be that council is constantly getting feedback from residents on any number of topics. And there is zero way or desire for administration to restrict that type of interaction between residents and members of council. Generally, that restriction is more specific to development pieces, but where it is more of a opinion that residents want to share with council. Certainly, we accept submissions all the way up until public hearings are closed. That become part of the formal minutes of this public hearing. But I would presume that you're going to continue to receive that feedback regardless of the fact that the public hearing will be closed by the end of today.
Perhaps I'll say this while I'm far enough away from Jaylene that she can't kick me under the table is, is I would perceive that activity to be really, really low risk.
Excellent.
There's no kick up. Are you good, Councillor McFadden?
Yeah, I feel that the highest risk is Mr. Derekot's safety.
Okay, I would, I would suggest that we, I mean, there's been a number of questions actually, like presented tonight. Understand, I'm glad we've had administration taking mad notes. We've all taken, been taking notes tonight as well. We already have an FAQ on our website. Perhaps we can put that into a public forum where all of the questions that were answered, are asked. And then we can put the answers there too as a way of not just informing council, but informing everybody that asked them tonight. I think would be a really quality, good step forward in this so that at least we're all dealing with the information, the same information.
Thank you for the suggestion, Mayor Janong. I think that would be a really good exercise to update the FAQs based on some of the questions and concerns. Some of them may have already been addressed there, but may be able to add additional context or information. And there may be some novel ones based on what we heard tonight that we can address through, you know, the FAQs. And I think we will take, take that suggestion.
Even just say, this was, this was asked at the public hearing and then go through, I think, a separate, you know, holding space for that. Because I have a ton of questions here. I'm sure all of us have the same. But we just, I think, give, give you the time to answer them and then we'll get back. Okay, council, any other questions? Don't see any other lights flashing. No one's asking to speak. I'm going to close the hearing. All right. Thank you.
I was going to say, I'm not sure if that constituted councillor McFadden taking out a hit on me there.